Commission hearing being held virtually on Tuesday, May sixth. This evening, we have three postponements. Item number one, eleven Ledge Road LLC for a final coastal subdivision at that address, eleven Ledge Road. And that is postponed. The next one is number six, Perry Valley RD six LLC for final site plan and special permit. Also with that address on a four acre property. Then eight Pickwick Properties LLC for a final site plan and special permit to modify previous conditions of approval. For a restaurant use that we approved on the ground floor of building three at Pickwick. And that's what a Pickwick Plaza. We have no absences today, so we will not for now be seating any alternates. Since the first application has been postponed. Oh, and Kelly Cullen will be our court reporter. Welcome, Kelly, and thanks for jumping in. Our first application then is Round Hill Club Inc. for a final site plan for a proposed long term tent. With event dates of six thirteen twenty twenty five to eight four twenty twenty five. And then again, in the fall, although those dates are not part of our review at this time. Who is representing the applicant? Round Hill Club, is anybody representing you for your tent?
Yasmin, Kelly, or somebody else from the?
Would you kindly raise your virtual hand if you were representing? There we go, Anna. All right, let's hope she's not a Zoom bomber.
She's a representative from Round Hill. I think she works at Round Hill.
Alrighty. Anna, you need to accept the promotion to panelist. Oh, there you go. Okay, great. And do we know Anna's last name?
I do not.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, trouble getting in there.
That's all right. Anna, what's your last name?
Robleski.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Robleski, hold on, I'll type it out for you.
No, the problem was just you're a little.
Your volume is bad.
Volume is not too great.
Let me see if I could fix that for you.
But we can hear you mostly. So there she is, she got herself. Oh, yeah, I had a totally different spelling for that. All right, so it's good you spelled it for us.
You got it.
Okay, so that's fine. So we announced your application. I don't know if you heard us do that. And if, if you wanna, if you wanna tell us anything about what you're doing, or we can just start out with commission questions.
Sure, you can start with questions. We're utilizing the tent for a couple of different events as well as our summer camp facility.
Yep, and then one of the, one of the things that was unclear from your application was whether or not gems had reviewed the emergency access. And whether you would have an ambulance on standby or anything like that. And whether you had contacted gems for the, I think the concern was the summer camp.
This is a routine process for us. I believe gems is aware of this. Directly, we don't traditionally contact them. I do believe that Greenwich Tent does.
It's part of the building permit process that, that they be advised. So we will just, if we, if we were to move this forward, we would just condition it on that basis. Because when you get the permit for the tent, that is part of what happens. So it's probably Greenwich Tent that does it, as you say.
You got it.
I think one of the things that we discussed, I don't see any other outstanding items on this. We did want to ask you that none of the proposed activities ever take up any of your parking. And that's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then the next thing was, rather than have you come in when you move the dates around. We had talked about just giving you a maximum number of days a year where you would tent. And then you wouldn't have to come back to us all the time and be asking for this. You would just be done. You would be set for that. Nick, were you able to calculate how many days they were asking for?
This time around, I got fifty two days, seven and a half weeks. This is from June thirteenth through August fourth.
And should we then include the time that's in the fall? So that they, that eleven twenty five to twelve twenty nine, so that's in the total number of weeks, Patrick?
No, we only need to, they're gonna be two separate permits. As long as neither of them extend beyond the ninety days, they, they can be acceptable. But commission, the commission hasn't approved anything over fourteen. So if whatever that acceptable number is, I think we just need to do it for the season before us. And then the other one, if it's not changing, can remain as is.
Okay, and then would they have to come back next summer?
No, so.
Okay, that's what I understood, they wouldn't have to.
Sorry, that was the question. No, they would not have to come back.
Okay, great. Okay, so fifty two days. Tracy.
They would have to come back administratively. They just wouldn't have to.
Oh, yeah.
Commission.
We just want to make less.
I just want to make sure the applicant was aware that they still.
Yeah, it's a lot more work to come to us. Mr. Low, you have a question?
It was a, it was for a shorter period last year, so it's varied year to year, arguably, at least in the last two or three.
So through the years past, we were hosting a six week program with an increased participation and great feedback from the program. We extended one week and we do foresee in years coming, that will be a seven week program rather than six.
They're quarantined those and that would be, so that would be forty two if it's a six, did I do that right?
No, it's gonna be, it's fifty two this year, and I just wonder whether.
Weeks is forty two days, the last time I did math.
Well, see, things have changed since the last time you did, because it's, they're, they want fifty two.
Okay, so fifty two is gonna work. Okay.
Does it matter? Can we give them like, give them a little leeway? Because they may expand a couple of days next year. And if you give them eight weeks.
I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with that? And Patrick, do you want to comment?
My only comment would be, and this may be a little bit OCD my part, but if the number can be a multiple of seven, that I think that's the most helpful. Because we, when we're always going to be dealing in round weeks and not, you know.
So fifty six days, so we're gonna go to fifty six days?
If, if that's, if that's what the applicant is agreeing to and the commission's amenable to, then that would be my suggestion. But again.
All right, I'm fine with it. Does anybody object? Okay, seeing no objection. Is there anything else from the commission? Ms. Roblevsky, did you want to add any comments?
No, thank you.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the Round Hill application for a summer tents, for two summer tents for their summer camp program? Please raise your virtual hand. Not seeing any public comment. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Seeing no objection, we will close this application and we will ask our elected secretary if he would kindly make a motion.
Okay, they got these dates correct. Three three Round Hill Club Road, application P L P Z twenty twenty five, one one zero, final site plan for a tent. Applicant seeking approval of two seasonal tent installations. The size, length of time proposed with tent installation requires approval by the commission per section six thirteen D three of the B Z R. Whereas the club is on a two hundred and twenty two acre property located in the R A two zone. Temporary tent installation consists of two twenty by fifty tents over two existing sports courts. From six thirteen twenty five to eight four twenty five. That's fifty two days or fifty six days now.
Well, that was, that is fifty two.
That's fifty two, you want fifty six?
Yeah, we said fifty six because Patrick wanted to be OCD.
Okay. I don't wish to be that way, I just am.
Fifty six days for summer camp use. Okay, therefore motion to approve the temporary tent installation with the following comments. Partisan permission shall coordinate with the health department on any and all approvals for summer camp use of the tent. Any proposed lighting shall be limited to under tent areas only. Any proposed lighting shall be limited to twenty seven hundred K, four hundred and fifty lumens, six watt LED string type patio fixtures. Any proposed lighting fixtures and installation shall meet the Connecticut building codes. Any proposed heating fixtures shall be reviewed and approved by the fire marshal's office. Partisan permit and updated C O Y to cover this timeframe shall be submitted. The tenant shall be listed as an additionally insured applicant shall notify planning and zoning staff of the tent has been installed. And planning and zoning staff is to confirm that the tents have been removed at the end of the approved time periods. Amplified music and public address systems are prohibited under the tents. Tents shall not compromise pedestrian safety, vehicular circulation, and approved parking. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second? Oh, wait, Mr. LaRoe.
Mr. MacRae, did I hear you say twenty seven hundred K lights?
Yes.
Is that, is there a reason for that? I believe the standard.
That's the, that's the string, a string light at six watts.
Okay.
Four hundred and fifty lumens with twenty seven hundred K.
All right, thank you.
He's good. All right, okay, do, did I get a second? Because Patrick doesn't count.
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much. Good luck with the camp and good luck with the fall event. Bye bye.
Thank you.
We now go to the public hearing. Kelly Cullen, are you all set? Kelly, are you good for sound?
I've never seen that logo.
Oh, good old Zoom. There she's back. And Chris.
Chris is on the team for the applicant.
He's retired bond, okay. And meanwhile, Kelly, we just need to make sure that you can, that we can hear you if you have any issues with the proceedings. She's got her hand up. You are not muted. So you, we should be able to hear you. You're not muted on our end, your microphone may be off. But worst case, I think I have, I think Patrick and I both have your cell number. So you can text any of us if you have a problem. Let me just check. Yeah, I do have your cell number. So just text us, Will, if, because something seems to be wrong with your mic. If, can you just text Patrick now and let him know if you're good on sound? Because now you're muted again. And we'll just be watching for you. Did you get anything? All right. She's good. I got it. Okie doke. All right, so now we open the public hearing. And Ms. Suchin, yesterday we had talked about, we understand that the three applications are very different. But at the same time, we wanted to talk about what we psych majors called the Gestalt. The holistic picture.
And that is how we have our presentation set up.
Yay, so let's just open all three then.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask.
And then you do the, the whole, the holistic view, which we're seeking to understand. And then as we drill down, we'll be able to, we'll try to be specific to each application. If there's comments on each one, and I think you heard us yesterday that there were some questions about each one specifically. But in the end, we're looking at the impact of all. That's fantastic. Since Ms. Suchin's is gonna be presenting, just raise your hands as she goes, I think. Is that all right, Ms. Suchin, so they can stop you and ask questions?
Yeah, so we have, so we have a presentation, as I said. We'll put that up. We're going to address all of the applications together. Just by way of background, and Amy Suchins for the record. We will, the plan is, is we will walk through, I'll give you an overview, sort of the sites in question, orienting everybody to things that are before you, aren't before you. But may have work going on, some of the relocations that have happened, just to give you that big picture. Then we'll walk through sort of what is happening technically at the five Perry Ridge, the main hospital campus, both interior and exterior. With our architect and landscape architect, same thing on seventy seven. And then overview on thirty eight Lake, three Perry Ridge. And then we will turn it over to Chris Granatini to walk you through the traffic and parking analysis, which I know you had a lot of comments and questions about.
Yeah, and mostly, Mr. Granatini, you, if you guys were listening yesterday, I think you were, we're just looking for the overall impact on traffic patterns, volume, pedestrian safety, all of that of these applications. Because it is the salient point that they have in common. So the commission is going to raise their hands and stop you as you go. And I'll, we'll try to be, not interrupt you too much, but I know they're interested in this, so.
Yeah, and that's why we tried to, I wanted to give you the overview, but then we do have it broken out, with the exception of Chris, who will wrap everything up, broken out by site.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure. So if I could have, we did, the hospital leadership did want to have a couple of minutes just at the beginning of our presentation. That means that promoted to panelist, I need, let's see, where is everybody? Bob Lenderman. Mark Kozak.
Hey, you guys are gonna overwhelm us. You always do this, you know?
They will be very brief.
No, no, I mean, there's always lots of people.
Rob Berkeley. And. Dr. O should be somewhere.
Hello, Dr. O. Now we got him, I'm working on.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at the attendee.
Yeah, well, because there's that moment that people are in.
Right.
Cyberland. Okay, I think we got everybody.
Great, Dana, if you want to put up the presentation?
Oh, wait, Mark Kozak.
Great. Thanks. All right, so as I said, Amy Suchins, for the record, I will introduce the team. But the first group that's going to speak to you is our hospital leadership team. Just to set the stage, as you all know, we're here on behalf of Greenwich Hospital and G H Realty Holding LLC, which is a Greenwich Hospital affiliate. There are three applications in front of you to sort of, in a certain context of the special permit, and then the others. So for five Perry Ridge Road and seventy seven Lafayette, we are here under the provision of the hospital zone regulations. That requires a special permit for any internal work exceeding twenty thousand square feet between any properties in the hospital zone, as everybody remembers. And I will walk you through, those are the two properties in the H one and H two. And then with respect to thirty eight Lake Avenue and three Perry Ridge Road, we are here on special permits on those to modify existing nonconforming uses to different, less intense, nonconforming uses. And we will walk you through the details of those. So with that, I will turn it over to the hospital leadership team, who are going to give you a brief introduction. And then we'll come back to me to start talking about the applications.
Thanks, Amy. And thank you, Madam Chairperson and the members of the P N Z Committee. My name is Bob Lenderman. I have the privilege of serving as the new president of Greenwich Hospital. I just finished my seventh week. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to, one, say hello and also be a part of this. A lot of my career, past twenty five years, has been in healthcare, both as a provider, as well as a hospital administrator. And, you know, this, this resonates to me enormously. Those of you who have had family members or have been involved in cancer care, I think, you know, I've seen it firsthand. That, you know, the comprehensiveness of putting the patient at the center is, is a pivotal kind of decision. And then also a very important position to have as a healthcare institution. One of the things that you'll hear today is, I think, the thoughtfulness of putting that patient at the center. It's very complicated diagnosis, as we all know, cancer, many specialties. And what you'll see is just how important it is to have that multidisciplinary to this. I'm not going to take too much of your time. I do want to hand it over to Rob Berkeley. Rob Berkeley is our chairman of the board at Greenwich Hospital and also a lifelong Greenwich resident. I'm gonna hand that over to Rob now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Bob. And thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for the opportunity to address the Planning and Zoning Commission. My wife Jennifer and I grew up in this great town. Our children were born at Greenwich Hospital, and we have a long supported the great work that goes on at the hospital in support of our community. Simply put, Smilow Cancer Hospital is needed in our community. The new center will provide the space for physicians to work in collaboration around the needs of the sadly great growing number of patients that come from our community. It will afford ample room for patients to receive the care that they need in a serene setting with access to the outdoors and without the additional burden of having to commute to get care at a more distant location. This new center will provide Greenwich residents with exceptional care delivered by some of the nation's most prominent and highly respected physicians and nurses in the space that allows for growth of new and needed services. I'm joined here tonight by members of the Greenwich Hospital Board. Several of them were able to join. We are here not just as trustees, but as Greenwich residents in support of bringing this cancer center to our community. With that, it is my pleasure to hand it over to Dr. O. Dr. O is the medical director of Smilow Cancer at Greenwich. And he is quite the accomplished physician, and we are more than fortunate to have him looking after Greenwich patients. Dr. O, over to you.
Well, thank you, Rob, and, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for the opportunity to talk about our vision for the Smilow Cancer Hospital at Greenwich Hospital. As this group knows, there's a lot of new treatments and new advances in cancer care. And it is a very exciting time as we really promote advances in diagnosis, treatment, survivorship, as well as palliative and end of life care. And these advances have actually helped our patients to live better and longer lives, really advances that were not imaginable even five or 10 years ago. But there is an issue for cancer patients getting care, especially this advanced level of care in places like New York or New Haven. It is very difficult in the middle of these types of diagnoses to travel for this type of care. And my joining Greenwich Hospital, which was several months ago only, it was really intended to try to help bring this advanced level of care, N C I level care, to the people of Greenwich and this community. I'm very excited about the investment being made to really bring the best treatments here for our patients in our community. And to really make their quality of life during this difficult time of their lives as, as really tolerable as possible. So I think the space that's being designed will really advance our ability to deliver these treatments. And I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with this group to really deliver the best of care to Greenwich Hospital and Greenwich community. So I'd like to turn it over now to Mark Kozak, our chief operating officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Again, just to reintroduce myself, I am Mark Kozak, and I get the pleasure of serving as the executive vice president and chief operating officer of Greenwich Hospital. I'll make some brief opening comments about our applications, just to set context, and then turn it to our attorney, Amy Suchins. Greenwich Hospital has appeared before this commission on two separate occasions, in the spring and summer of twenty twenty one and summer and fall of twenty twenty two. In both applications, Greenwich sought permission to construct a new freestanding cancer center on the corner of Lake and Lafayette avenues. And in both cases, the applications were denied. Greenwich Hospital, our leadership and board of trustees remain committed to providing the highest quality of care to our community. As this commission's chair stated in the last denial, this decision impacts lives. We could not agree more, and that's why we're here again. Our mission is to take care of the sickness and health of our community. And in order to do that, we must find a way to continue to improve and preserve the lives of cancer patients in this community by employing top notch technology and care provided by the nation's leading oncologists in modern, comfortable, and healing space that our patients deserve. Our current physical plant at the Bentheim is more than twenty five years old now, and it limits our ability to serve the patients who require our care. The current application before you draws on the comments made by this commission during the hospital's prior applications for the center. In the last denial, it was stated that the freestanding cancer center would negatively impact the character of the Greenwich neighborhood. Throughout the proceedings, the hospital was asked to evaluate locating the center within the existing hospital zone properties and not seek a zone change that would alter the surrounding neighborhood. The hospital has taken these comments to heart. Unlike prior applications, this proposal requires no zone change or request or change of use in the hospital zone properties. The oncology care we are providing here in Greenwich would be entirely located within, within the existing hospital facility and the Bentheim facility. The proposal seeks a very modest interior renovation of the main hospital at five Perry Ridge Road, covering approximately thirty six thousand squeet, square feet, just about seven percent of the total of the building. Again, this is very small in the grand scheme of things, but incredibly important for patients diagnosed with cancer. And that's what I ask this commission to remember. This is about people, members of our community who are sick and deserve the best of care close to home. Once services are relocated to the hospital, the bend time will be updated and right sized for services currently provided at this location. As Amy mentioned, in addition to this proposal at five Perry Ridge, there are two related projects that are also here before you. These projects are designed to accommodate less intense, nonpatient uses in existing hospital owned facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy and the rest of our design team.
Great, thanks. Next slide. So as I said, I wanted to just take a minute and orient everybody to the various properties that we're going to talk about. I think it's gonna help each of you keep the various components straight and, and what's before you. And particularly as we get into some of the traffic discussion later on, I thought it would be helpful to, to orient everybody. So I think the main applications are these sort of circled, or in the box, red boxes, five Perry Ridge Road and specifically the Watson Pavilion, and I'll explain that in a second. And seventy seven Lafayette, which goes by the name of the Cohen Pavilion, Benheim Cancer Center. So I think as everybody knows, if you enter the hospital sort of proper on five Perry Ridge Road, and you come in from Perry Ridge, you reach the front door. The Watson Pavilion is to your left, right there. It's the one with the portion with the white roof. The front of it is the area that kind of comes along Lake Avenue, and we'll get into that in the details. The Helmsley Pavilion is to the north, being circled. And both of those are the pieces that comprise the, the hospital building there. Obviously, the staff garage is, is there as well. When you go underground, and this will come up in the discussion about the parking, there are technically two parking garages, one under each of the two pavilions. Watson to the left as you enter the building, Helmsley to the right. Traditionally, when people talk about, and I, I heard some of it yesterday, experience of coming to the hospital and driving around a garage. You are typically directed to the Helmsley Garage, and Chris will go into some of that discussion. The one other thing I wanted to orient you on this property is right underneath where it says Watson and the pin is where Ally Harrison, during our presentation later, will be talking to you about where the healing garden and the exterior work is taking place. And then across the street at seventy seven Lafayette is the Cohen Pavilion. It is in the H two zone, also one of the hospital zones, as Mark alluded to, approximately twenty five years as a cancer center at this point. And as you'll hear when we go into that application, cancer treatment has evolved extensively since then, and that building will be uh renovated for that care. Um, coming back across onto Lake Avenue, Thirty-eight Lake Avenue is a former medical office uh directly opposite the main hospital building on the other side of, south side of Lake Avenue. Um, that is a special permit application. It is currently a non-conforming uh medical office use. We are going to uh ask that that be uh accommodated as a less intense, non-conforming use of uh just office, that is where the hospital um uh HR department is going to go. And then uh the other application before you is One Three Perry Ridge. Um, I'll clarify for everybody, the legal address of this property, despite it having two buildings, is Three Perry Ridge. So the various application materials that you've seen reference it as Three Perry Ridge. Um, Three is actually the house on the property. Um, the medical office building that we're talking about here is One. Um, so that is in the R6 zone, also a, at this point, entirely non-conforming medical office building approved in nineteen fifty-nine, constructed a couple of years after uh two levels. We are going to leave the lower level as uh existing medical office. We are going to convert the upper level to medical education. I will get into what medical education involves um during the um substantive presentation on that that property. Um, next slide. And one of the things that we heard you talk about during both the pre-application and in the um uh some of the discussion yesterday was understanding how what is happening in the hospital is relocating to other portions um of either hospital properties or other locations in town. Um, so what you see here, um, facilities, office currently in the Pavilion, in the Watson Pavilion, is moving to uh Sixteen Lake Avenue. Um, Fifty-six uh Lafayette will become the home of uh the Quality and Risk Department. And there is also um One Perry Ridge in the yellow is where uh this is another classroom that will be moved to that uh property. Next slide. And then this gets, this slide gets to the heart of where this Milo uh component will take place. This is the first floor of the Watson Pavilion. Uh, the Garden Cafe will be vacated. The HR department, as I said, is moving to Thirty-eight Lake Avenue. Um, the medical library will be vacated, and the respiratory unit is moving to Five Hundred West Putnam. Uh, on the other side, you see here that um that component is moving to the uh is moving to Forty-nine Lake Avenue. The applications for Five Hundred West Putnam and Forty-nine Lake Avenue um are outside of the scope of what we have here. Um, as staff noted yesterday, those are uh transitions to existing medical office space and therefore will happen as of right. The small spot in the purple is just an internal move.
I'm sorry, Amy, but our response to that was that if this helps, that that we wanted to, that we would, especially when we got to traffic and parking, that just to understand holistically. So when you're moving operations to Five Hundred West Pot, you're moving traffic out of the, out of Watson onto the post road.
Correct.
And that should be a benefit to your traffic study. So we would want you to touch on that. We know that it's not before us. But we, again, that's why we were looking for that. So I hope you have included how that impacts, because that's what the commission, how how it impacts the neighborhood, what this neighborhood, what you're moving to other locations.
Yes. So when when Chris Granatini does his presentation and just as a, as a preview, um, the the deduction was made for the um uh department moving to Five Hundred West Putnam. Everything else, because it was staying in the neighborhood, um whether it was Forty-nine Lake and somebody's coming in there or things relocating, all of those have been factored into the traffic study. So we did not take um any deduction for things that might relocate within the build, within the vicinity, but not, for example, something like Five Hundred West Putnam. Uh, if we could go to the next slide. It could actually choose slides. Yeah, one more. Thanks. Um, and then the same thing, the purple are just internal moves for space in the hospital. And then occupational health is moving to Fifty-six Lafayette. Again, that's an as-of-right medical to medical, um, not before you, but again, like with the others, no deduction taken for that move. And then um the Sim Lab will go into, is moving to uh One Perry Ridge, Three Perry Ridge. Um, so those are the sort of gist of the the renovations. Um, the, there have been moves out of the hospital over the uh last couple of years. Um, included in Exhibit A to our special permit narrative um was the breakdown of how many things have moved out of the hospital um over the last several years as well as um the patient and um staff counts expected with these moves.
Um, yeah, it just, is the commission uh clear on what is being relocated from Watson, or should we just ask Ms. Suchins to go back again one slide and just tell us what's in each of those areas that is being relocated? Just tell me if you want to unmute, just anybody who is, who wants more clarification, just let me know, because this is great. Uh, Madam Jenkins, if you would, go ahead.
Yes, uh, let me know if this is accurate. It looks like the only thing that is going away from the immediate area is pulmonary that's going to Five Hundred West.
That is the move um included in the narrative were some other moves that have already taken place.
So the new moves, great question, Mary, because that's, so go back a slide, can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the the Five Hundred West in green, that's the pulmonary.
Correct.
Pulmonary rehab. Okay.
Thank you. That that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
And everything else, some things have already moved. And everything else that you're going to talk about is forthcoming.
Correct. Or in the case of the cafe or the library, really weren't things that were generating traffic. They were sort of support for the hospital, and so those were some of the spaces we're using.
And the cafe's gone permanently?
Yes.
Oh. Alrighty. Okay, go ahead. I think we got it. Is everybody clear? Because I was struggling over the weekend, not not having this. Um, I was struggling a little bit with the layout and to understand it.
Right.
I think everybody's good. Okay.
Okay, good. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Rich Sears. He's going to walk you through sort of the basics of what's happening in the Smilow space.
Yeah. Uh, Richard Sears, we're architect with the SLAM Collaborative. Um, as uh, you know, Mark Kozak and Dr. Oh uh touched on, uh, you know, the projects that we're going to describe first in the Watson Pavilion at Five Perry Ridge, and then later uh in the Cohen Pavilion at Seventy-seven Lafayette. Uh, you know, are intended to improve and modernize the cancer care services that are coming, currently going on at Seventy-seven Lafayette. So if we go to the first slide, we'll see the first floor of the Watson Pavilion. So as uh Amy, as Amy noted, the Watson Pavilion is the, you know, the square somewhat tilted uh building on the south end of the hospital. Um, after the move take place that uh Amy discussed with uh, you know, either uh the vacancy of the cafe or groups moving to Five Hundred uh West Putnam, et cetera, we will be doing a renovation of the entire first floor. Uh, the first floor is going to provide twenty-two locations for patients to receive chemotherapy uh and other infusion cancer treatments. Uh, again, that's, those are services moving from the Cohen Pavilion. Um, the remainder of the floor is made up of the necessary supporting spaces, uh patient waiting, staff administrative functions. Additionally, we have a pharmacy that is dedicated to the uh just-in-time preparation of the infusion medications that the patients will be uh receiving. Um, and then uh as as Amy hinted at, uh, both patients and families will have access to a new garden uh that you see here to the south and east of the uh Watson Pavilion. Um, new healing garden is both intended uh for patients. Uh, patients can actually receive uh chemotherapy in portions of the garden uh and provide respite for family and caregivers. Um, uh, Ally, our landscape architect, is going to give you some detail on the garden in a moment. We can go to the next plan. And then so again, once the second floor of the Watson Pavilion is look, is uh relocated, uh, we will do a complete renovation. This floor is the Multi-Specialty Oncology Clinic. It will consist of seventeen uh exam rooms. Um, and again, the necessary supporting spaces for waiting, uh, blood draw, uh, staff and administrative functions. Um, and then these two floors will function uh really together as many patients that come uh will be first be seen on the second floor for their exam, and then they'll move to the uh first floor for their infusion. I think Ally's now going to touch on the, well, yeah, Ally's going to touch on the garden.
Thank you, Rich. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ally Harrison, a landscape architect with the SLAM Collaborative. Um, go to the next slide, please. Uh, so as mentioned, in addition to uh the improvements internal to the building for cancer care services, there's an outdoor component as well. Uh, this includes the outdoor garden space where patients can receive treatment um and a space that caregivers and patients can enjoy throughout the treatment process. Um, this slide and the next represent the new door access locations to this garden space. Um, one on the building's eastern facade and two on the building's um southern facade uh that provide directs, direct access to this healing garden. Go to the next slide. So this shows the access to the, the two-door access to the south. Uh, next slide. Um, so this slide shows the existing conditions at the proposed garden location today. Uh, to create this space, it's it's a modification and extension of the existing patio area. Um, as outlined in the blue dash line in the existing conditions photo here, uh, it's a design to utilize the existing space and expanding upon that to create a garden that can be accessed privately from the hospital. Um, this outdoor area is is really to provide a tranquil healing garden experience, whether you're receiving treatment interiors of the building um or exterior within the garden um and keeping it visible from from all treatment area windows. Um, that being said, um, I'd like to share that the view you're seeing in the upper uh right corner, and that's a small box there, will be maintained. So improvements are internal to the existing patio and walkways. So the trees and that screen that you're seeing in that view will be maintained. Um, in the proposed graphic at the bottom of the page, um, the garden is classified in into two separate spaces, or it's the healing garden and the caregiver garden. Um, as mentioned, the healing garden is is for outdoor treatment, and the caregiver side of the garden is for those who are waiting for loved ones um being treated and for patients before and after treatment. Um, go to the next slide, please. Um, so to jump in spatially, uh, for this design, this planned view and the the rendered view directed towards the caregiver garden um shows further the relationship and the scale of the space against the interior of the building um and up against the existing walk to the patio, um existing patio. So it's one outdoor garden space with two clear uses and an informal connection between the two. So the gate that you see towards the middle is for maintenance access only. Um, to reiterate, primary access to this garden is through the hospital only, uh limited to the patients, their caregivers and staff. Um, this design also reduces the amount of impervious surface, um providing more green, green garden space. Um, the existing pergola structures to remain and be a key component uh to the more intimate space for those receiving outdoor treatment, um which will show a little bit more closely in an upcoming slide. Um, but it's it's important to note that this existing green space and the existing patio, it is open to the public, but is primarily only hospital staff that utilize the pathways and the remainder of the existing patio. Um, that being said, the proposed walls that you see across the images are to provide clear separation of spaces while still providing a comfortable experience for those walking along existing walkways. Um, the proposed walls are are overall roughly two, two and a half feet high, maximum of four, um where the natural grade will dip down. And visually, this garden space is about eighty to ninety feet from Perry Ridge Road. So with the change in elevation, the existing site walls, um mature vegetation, this won't be widely visible.
Ms. Harrison, uh, one of our members has a question. Do you mind if he?
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Yaski?
I don't know whether this is premature. Uh, they they can continue. I had a question on the parking. And actually, what you mean by the first floor, uh, the Watson Center?
Okay, so so not, not on the, on the, on the healing garden that?
No.
Okay, all right. So we'll, um, Mary, did you want to ask something about the garden?
Yes, I'm I'm asking about the garden.
So hold tight, Dennis.
Yeah.
Um, specifically the, it looks like, it it looks like a beautiful space, and I totally understand the value to the patients. But it looks like you're removing three mature trees. It looks like one eighteen-inch tree and two twelve-inch trees. And I'm wondering if there's any possibility to retain those. You're you're not taking all the trees down, but you're, you are removing three significant trees. And it would be wonderful if you can, if you can maintain them. They're not, you know, they're they're already part of the existing landscape, and it would be great if you can protect them and maintain them as well.
I'm actually going to get that that in a feature slide, so we can touch on on some of the landscaping. We can hang, no. Good question, I know.
Thunder, I'm sorry.
No, no, no thunderstorm. Okay, we can go to the, any other questions at the moment? We'll move to the next slide. It might be the next slide, actually. Um, next slide, look at. Um, so let's say, as you, as you can see in this graphic, um, from the space from Perry Ridge Road as well, there's a lot of existing canopy coverage that will be maintained. So this slide is actually to provide clarity and a response to some comments and discussion had at ARC last week regarding tree removal um and the replacement of of some trees. So a- as you said, three trees will be removed to accommodate the garden space as the critical root zones of all three trees will be impacted. Um, and we did explore reducing the, this garden space, which is also really small. So with maintaining those trees, it's um pretty impossible there. But that being said, um, the the three trees are growing really close to the building, one very, very close. Um, and we provided replacement canopy trees in select locations that you can see here that will give uh those replacement trees the space that they can, they really need to to grow and thrive. Um, in addition to the replacement trees, five trees will be planted in the garden space. They will have a small and mature canopy, but they'll be well-suited for the size of the garden space. Um, so I hope, um, as I mentioned, that this graphic really does capture all of the existing canopy around the hospital. You can see there's a large amount of existing canopy that surrounds the site and screening to the corner um of this building where the garden will.
Um, can I just ask, is it, would it be possible to to push the retaining wall that you're adding for privacy back enough to retain those, some of those trees? The one tree I do see is quite close to the building, and I understand, but.
There won't be much of the garden left, unfortunately, because of the size of of those trees, those root zones um would would be pretty impacted. Um, we did explore pulling the walls back um to men, to maintain those. So our intent would be to, the, it's a replacement oak and and maple are the two on the um, uh, I guess, left side of the page, but the the south side. Um, yes, thank you, that we would be replacing those two in locations where there's a bit more space. Um, in addition to adding the proposed trees and relocating one of the the plums as well at the patio. So we'll be really keeping as much screen as possible of that corner and replacing what we can in the garden space um in addition to some new plantings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, um, I may have missed it. Uh, did you provide us with the uh size of the trees to be removed?
The size of the trees to be removed?
Yes.
Um, they should be in the plans that were submitted, yes.
I I missed it, okay. Uh, but you don't have them offhand.
I can actually grab those.
I'm sorry, there were two twelve inch trees and one eighteen inch tree. I forget which one is the oak, I think.
Um, yeah, so the oak and the maple are the twelve inch trees and the eighteen inches is a hemlock.
Okay, good. Thanks so much. And, and thank you, Mary.
Okay, next slide, please. So also requested by ARC last week of providing some section elevations to provide some clarity on, on the changes in elevation we're talking about and just a clear picture of the relationship of the existing and proposed walls and materials. So this elevation captures that, that view of the corner we're speaking to where the site wall would be the highest due to the existing grade at roughly four feet and then it'll tie back up the existing walk and towards other side of the building, going back to, to closer to two to two and a half feet for the remainder of the wall. And next slide, please. And then these two views here focus on the outdoor treatment area. So this is, is on the existing patio looking back towards the, the building southern face. So you have the one view from the, the outside pathway, any other from inside underneath the existing pergola where treatment would be. So as you can see from images here, there's a heavy focus on planting design to provide proper screening to this area. As the intent is to be a private and comfortable area, but also providing an, an outdoor environment that's soothing and uplifting for, for patients receiving treatment. Next slide, please. And this, this final graphic here just reiterates the, the design intent overall. So we see this space is not only an extension of the existing outdoor patio, but an extension of the building as well, providing the opportunity to bring treatment and a place for healing outside the hospital in a safe environment. So wanted to, to close on this slide here.
Madam Chairwoman, this is the sort of affirmative presentation on the, the Five Perry Ridge.
Okay, so.
Campus. So if there are anything, anything specific here, happy to address that before we move.
Dennis Yeski had questions and I believe they're going to be on your previous slides. And then it, I think then he has some questions that go to the parking as well. So Dennis, I think this would be the time for you to go ahead.
Okay, I, I can certainly see the effort you folks have put in and thank you for taking us seriously. I mean, it's clear that you've had to move around departments, figure out which ones still need to be near the hospital, which ones stay in it, which ones can move. Let me, let me try to understand something. Unfortunately, I know the Watson Pavilion too well. When you say first floor, I come out, well, let, let's go to parking. I assume the idea is to funnel the Smilow cancer patients in the main parking, near the front entrance. You're, you're wired around to that booth and you're going to hang a left. Is that idea you're going to bring all the patients down on the left down there?
Yes.
To, to get to that elevator bank that goes up onto the Watson Pavilion?
Correct.
Okay. There is a lot of staff parking there now, so I assume that's going to move? Or can you handle patients and staff at that space?
Yes, overall, I mean, overall, and Chris Granatino, he's got all the volumes. But yes, the intention would be that that parking garage now primarily cut, becomes for use by, by patients of the Smilow Cancer Center.
And so all the staff parking there is going to go somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay, the doctors may not be happy about that. I see all the doctors parking there. When, when I take that elevator, the first floor, this is my question. I come out into a big open area. Is that really the ground floor and what you're talking about is the next floor up?
No, we can see, no, that's, that's the first floor.
So when I go to Dr. Petrotis on the left there, that's your first floor, right?
Yes.
No, Doc, Dr. Petrotis is actually on the second floor.
Oh, is he? Okay, but when you come out, when you come out, when you come up the elevator, it always stops on the first floor.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and it's kind of a big open lobby area. There's a guard there, that kind of thing?
Correct, yes.
So you're going to reconfigure that into the Smilow Center?
Correct. That, that lobby will become, that lobby will, will get a modernization and look much like the rest of the, the renovations of the Watson Pavilion.
Okay, now I understand. Okay, and then the second floor is where Petrotis is and that's going to, you're going to do the same thing, you're going to renovate that?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Let's just stop there. That's, I get the Watson, I get the Watson's Pavilion. I, I see what you're going to, and all the Smilow activities are going to be in that space, those couple floors, right?
Well, yes. Well, everything that's in the Five Perry Ridge, yes. The first floor is infusion and the second floor is the multi-specialty clinic. There will be, other functions will remain in Cohen. So essentially, the Smilow Cancer Center and as an entity is going to be split between the Watson Pavilion and the Cohen Pavilion.
Okay. All the traffic goes on those roads. Got it. All right. I, I, we'll just focus. I got it now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I can give a, so then I can give a, a brief of what, what would come next, right? So we'll, we need to take the time to complete all of the construction in the Watson Pavilion. And then if we go to the first slide in this section, so now this isn't even more, right? So we are now on the second floor of the Cohen Pavilion, which is elevated. Right? So to, to really get confused by floors. So following the completion of the work in the Watson Pavilion and the infusion and multi-specialty clinic moving to Watson, we are going to do a phased renovation of the Cohen Pavilion. Throughout construction in this building, the breast surgery clinic, best care and radiation therapy will continue to provide patients care for the Greenwich community. Again, the second floor that we were on has is the radiation therapy of the comprehensive oncology services here at Greenwich Hospital. The floor area that is vacated by infusion services that moves to Watson will be, will be renovated to allow for new, modern and right-sized functional spaces. The two linear accelerators, which provide radiation therapy will remain unchanged. Six new exam rooms will be constructed. These rooms will replace smaller outdated rooms with new rooms meeting current healthcare standards. The remainder of the floor will be renovated with a new larger waiting space, private changing areas, physicians' offices and staff support spaces. Then we can go to the third floor. The third floor will also be renovated on the left side of the floor as you see there. The breast surgery clinic will be completed with six new exam rooms and equipped to current standards as well for staff and physicians. The right side of the floor will be the breast care center, which will have private changing rooms, five mammography rooms, five ultrasound rooms, as well as staff and physician spaces. Both practices will share a new larger waiting room and be connected behind the scenes for a patient who may need to go from imaging and, you know, then see a surgeon on that same visit. So again, we are following the Watson project. We are completely refreshing the Cohen Pavilion.
And the one other thing just on Cohen is that there is.
Just a second, Ms. Sujan. And Noel, you had a question?
I, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it looked like, and Noel, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just maybe you covered it. I missed it. I'm sorry. So what happens on the first floor of the Cohen Center? Are there any changes or is just the same as, as it is now?
The first floor is actually parking.
Okay.
The building, it's parking and just an elevator lobby. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, and Noel does have her hand up.
Actually, you have a question because it came up and maybe I'm not sure who's best placed to answer this. But a question was trying to understand what it means sort of right sizing, I guess, cancer care, because it came up and it just came up again in terms of the Cohen Pavilion. That was one question. The other question I have is, these slides with all the, the colors and stuff, I mean, this presentation, we don't have this in OneDrive, do we?
It's under, it's, right now it's under Three Perry Ridge and Noel, I will.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, we just got it this afternoon.
I think, I appreciate.
But it is under Three Perry Ridge in the Commission OneDrive.
Okay, I've been looking under five and seventy-seven.
Three is what came first when I was looking through, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. Now that I know where it is, it's good. I can, I'll follow along so I can read that. But I did have a question and it doesn't have to be answered now, but at some point I'd love to sort of understand a little bit about kind of right sizing care and it comes up several times in regard to the Cohen Pavilion.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I had heard that was a question, but you know, continue with that. So, so what right sizing really means is as it's been stated before, you know, this building is twenty-five plus years old. And so the standards, which in some cases are actually codified by the state of Connecticut, the standards for an exam room, for example, may have been, you know, ninety or a hundred square feet. And now we make every exam room a hundred and twenty square feet. And that is because, you know, quite a bit of time in, in the industry goes into understanding what is the right size for these spaces. And today we know exam rooms need to be bigger. There is more equipment. You know, that, as we said, the, the care has become equipment intensive. So exam rooms are bigger. Mammography rooms might be bigger because the mammography machines have gotten bigger because they're doing more things. Essentially, as healthcare evolves, these spaces tend to, to take more space, right down to, you know, people have gotten bigger. So we specifically now have exam rooms for individuals of size. And so it's those types of things that we, what, that we mean when we say we are right sizing any healthcare space.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Excellent question. Mary Jenkins?
Yeah, I, I don't want to interrupt the presentation, but I do have questions about the staff changes based upon the changes in the Cohen Pavilion. Should I hold off on that until we get to that specifically or? I'm just curious as to, because you are right sizing and also obviously concentrating on particular kinds of care, whether your staff in that building or your patient, your patient care in that building is going to change in any, in any particular.
Because that would contribute to traffic and parking demand and a shift in your traffic and parking.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's probably best answered when Chris Granatini gets to traffic. You know, we, there is a side-by-side comparison of patient visits and the associated staff that, that go on in this building today versus the future.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then the last thing on Cohen, the only exterior work, sort of true site work that was proposed here was a new transformer. That was the source of some questions last week at ARC. Just for the record, we are going to handle that separately, subject to certainly willing to accept it as a condition of approval that, that transformer be approved. And, you know, through the usual process, we are working with, obviously, there's the concerns with your regulations. The lot also has some limitations as to where the building is, setbacks, and we're looking to some issues for Eversource as well. So that piece will, will likely address separately.
Okay, I'm going to let Patrick go first because I think he's going to talk about the non-conformity. And then Dennis has a question.
Uh, yeah, Amy, I know we've had a conversation about this recently, but reviewing the plan, i- if that equipment doesn't meet zoning setbacks, the commission will not be able to act on it. It will need, because we need the variance or we need a revision to, we, we need to have to prove it to meet the requirements or it would be subject to a variance, which we can't do. So it, it's just something to talk, think about as, as we go forward, but.
Understood.
And, yeah, I believe.
Okay.
The, the reason, reason we've put it where we've put it, Patrick, is we do believe the lo, the location is the one place we can put it that does meet the setbacks. So that's the intention. So that, that should be, that should be fine there.
Yeah.
And now, and now to Dennis?
I, I thought, I wasn't going to ask this, but I have another one, but I thought the equipment's already in this building.
It is, but we do, again, due to modern, both modern air handling systems, we are also going to completely modernize the building's air handlers. And that requires an upgrade to the electric service, which is driving the need for the transformer.
So you're going to renovate all that too?
We're going to renovate this. We're going to renovate the entire infrastructure of the building as well, correct?
In the spirit of going building by building, that parking, are you, are you touching that parking somehow? It's all, already pretty tight. It's very awkward down there. Are you just leaving it alone? Are you restriping it? Are you doing adding, subtracting?
There's, there's no plan to add or subtract any spaces, no.
Okay. Just going building by building, that's all.
All right, I want to go ahead.
Is there anything else on Cohen before we move forward?
We might jump around. So, but does anybody have, have another question on Cohen? And that is a Greenwich resident. We're going to call on the public at the end, so just write down your question and hang tight, okay? Because I know this is complicated and big, but we're going to let the commission have a go at it first. Go ahead, Ms. Sujan.
Yeah, so we're going to move on to Thirty-Eight Lake Avenue. I'm, I'm going to give you a quick overview on these. Dave Ginter is available. But we thought in the interest of time, we'll give you a presentation and then you can ask questions. So next slide. So on Thirty-Eight Lake Avenue, this is a former single-family house. This is the one directly across the street on, on the south side of Lake Avenue. It was most recently and is currently, has been used as a medical office. It was two psychologists and a, two psychologists and a cardiologist. Medical office is non-conforming in the RMF zone. The prop, the building's approximately twenty-one hundred square feet. It's a very small lot, point one nine acres. So the idea that you see here on the plans is to renovate this building and turn it into the hospital's human resources department. It includes between the two floors, seven offices and then some support space as well. Next slide. And then with respect to the exterior of the building, or excuse me, to the site, the site is also non-conforming with respect to current parking. Number one, the parking count itself is non-conforming for the use as medical office. And the parking spaces themselves are non-conforming with current design requirements. And so what we're proposing on the site is to add, number one, a compliant ADA accessible space right at the rear of the building. And then also reconfigure the existing parking into current zoning compliant size spaces. Some additional landscaping just along the edge to enhance what's currently there. The resulting change with the parking creates, as I said, it's non-conforming with respect to the parking count currently. This reduces the non-conformity. Does result in a shortfall of two spaces from the current, but is permitted as a reduction in the non-conformity as, as noted in the staff report. And obviously, we believe that this use is particularly as, you know, hospital-type office, general office, far less intense than the in-and-out type intensity that was happening while it was used as medical office. And then on the next slide. There's obviously, and then the last component on this is just, this illustration highlighted a couple of the maintenance type issues that are going to happen on this building with replacement of the roof and some of the downspouts, et cetera. So that's, that is the gist of Thirty-Eight Lake. This one, again, the special permit is for the change of the, the non-conforming use. So happy to answer any questions. And like I said, if there's anything on the site plan, Dave Ginter is available to, to answer questions.
Any questions from anybody?
Okay, all right. We'll move on to Three Perry Ridge. As I said. All right, we'll move on to Three Perry Ridge. As I said, next slide. This is one slash three, this is the building adri- legal address, Three Perry Ridge. This is the medical office building, mailing address of One Perry Ridge. As you can see here, it's currently and was approved back in nineteen fifty-nine for a two-level medical office building. It is entirely nonconforming as a office building right now. It's also nonconforming in the sense that the lot also has a single-family house on it as well. So the proposal before you, as you see in the site plan, is to convert the upper level, which is shown in orange, the lower level remains medical office for the doctor that is currently there. The upper level is medical education, and I know there was a question yesterday about what that means. It is really a training space for new hospital employees or hospital new hires. It includes a classroom, a mock patient room, offices for the educators who are doing that. It is not intended to drive any traffic to the site. I know there was a question about lecturers or people who would be coming in. Nothing like that is proposed. This is a space that, you know, as a new, you know, new employee comes in, has, like I said, the mock patient room, and they're able to do some medical train, the training of, of new employees in this, in this space. Next slide. And then here, same thing, some mod- modest changes to the site, most importantly, creating ADA accessible spaces that don't exist on the site currently. The site is pretty much consistent with the nineteen fifty-nine site plan. I'll get to that in a second. But the modifications here are to add those ADA spaces at the front of the building and also make a slight modification to the building itself, to allow that ADA access in a, in a ramp. The details of that, and Dave can certainly answer any questions. Some modest landscaping, again, along the right side, just to enhance what is currently there, trees and, and things like that. And then the other component here, and you see it right at the front, is to add a gate arm, just like is shown. This, the illustration on the left side is consistent with what is diagonally across the street at Lot D, so it's just a very small gate arm. It will have a key access, so anybody coming to the site, if there's an employee who is accessing, they would have a key card. If the most, that would apply to the doctor and the, his staff on the lower level. The employees for the medical education department will park in the staff garage across the street at the main hospital campus. So the doctors and his staff would have the key card access. Patients for him would be, have a intercom access to the doctor's office, and that the gate would open. At the rear of the property, at the back, onto Division Street, there would also be a gate to, that would go up automatically. One of those situations where the gate just lifts up as a car car approaches. And then on the next slide, highlighting here, the center photo is where the changes would be made to accommodate the access for the ADA, and then again, just highlighting some of the maintenance-type work that is going to occur on the property. And then the last slide on this property really relates to a question that came up from the neighbors. If we could go to the next slide, there has been some question by, raised by our Division Street neighbors about the closing off the Division Street exit and allowing for two-way access onto Perry Ridge Road. The hospital did look at this, and we provided this to you so we could sort of explain to you why this is not a viable solution. So under the current zoning regulations, in order to meet the requirements for two-way access and maintain all of the existing parking that's required by the building, that would require us, given the frontage, the grade, the sightlines on Perry Ridge, frankly, all of the same issues that were discussed in the original nineteen fifty-nine approval, it would require these modifications and would obviously tack onto the properties, as you see here, in order to get around the building with the required with access onto the William Street and parking on the William Street properties that the hospital owns. So this illustration was really just to explain to you why this solution is not viable. Number one, and I think most importantly, this is a nonconforming medical office building. Anything that we're doing to expand it is not allowed as an expansion of a nonconforming use. So I think there's that. The other component is that, as you see here, once we get into the parking spaces, if we are to keep them associated with this property, it would require along the William Street properties, a series of variances, because those are also nonconforming lots. And so if we were to try and keep the parking in a location such that it could stay with the Three Perry Ridge, putting aside the expansion of the nonconforming use, we would still require a series of variances on the William Street property. And then at the very back corner, sort of the top right, at the rear of twenty-seven William Street, yep, right up there, where the cursor is, there is a small pocket of wetlands there, so it would also require a wetlands application. So from our perspective, while the neighbors did ask that we investigate this, ultimately, from a regulatory standpoint, we don't see a path forward, which is why we're proposing what we showed in the site plan to allow the minimize any kind of cut-through traffic or issues with Division Street that may have been experiencing. We submitted a supplemental narrative yesterday afternoon. I fully understand if you haven't seen it yet, but just highlighting that there were some counts that we did, there is clearly some traffic cutting through from Division Street or Perry Ridge Road coming in and out at off-hours on the site with the installation of the gate. Some of that concern about this site being used as cut-through and thus generating unnecessary traffic on Division Street will be mitigated by the installation of the gates. I think that's also very consistent with what was indicated in the nineteen fifty-nine approval, which was frankly, conditioned on Perry Ridge as an entrance and Division Street as an exit. And so that's kind of the summary on Three Perry Ridge. If you don't have any questions on that, we'll turn to Chris, but that's.
If I could ask you a question, Ms. Sutens, these, the, the small buildings that you're remodeling.
Yes.
As you know, Connecticut's state law allows you to continue the, the nonconforming use as long as you don't expand it. So, did you guys, I'm just curious, did you guys look at it, that it is cost-effective for you to remodel these buildings as opposed to demolishing them and just building something in the same size, so you don't expand the nonconformity, but you actually, you retain the, you retain the size, and then, and you, you just build it new so that it works better? It's, is the retrofit cost-effective for you? I mean, to us, it would not really matter as long as the building fit with the neighborhood. And I think, I, it's, you know, for other people who have to decide that, but it just seems like you could demolish and rebuild, especially that doctor's office, that's three. Did you guys look at that and decide this was the most cost-effective for you and that you would rather just remodel?
Um, so certainly, we looked at the cost and options with all of these locations, but from a legal perspective, I think if we took down the building, given that the use itself is what's nonconforming, it's not necessarily, I mean, the building is simply because there's two buildings. But I think if we were to affirmatively demolish the building and end the use, I don't think under nonconforming.
Saying, so you would have to retain, Patrick's gonna, Patrick and Tracey, you're gonna weigh in in a sec. Actually, I'm thinking that if the, if the new, you're allowed to keep a nonconformity and replace it with another nonconformity as long as the new one, in our regs, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Patrick, Tracy, do I have that, do you wanna correct me at all on that?
No, that is what our regulations say, so.
Yeah. So if you were doing, and you said, for example, where H R is going, it's gonna be less intense. And assuming that was true, you would be changing use to something less detrimental to the neighborhood, less traffic. And so the question would be, if you were going forward with this, you'd, you wouldn't be able to expand physically, and I'm probably losing all the hospital people, but I know you know what I mean. You wouldn't be able to expand the nonconformity physically.
Correct.
But would you do better working within the bricks and mortar that you, that, the, the, the shell, the concept of that? I'm, I'm phrasing it badly. I'm struggling to phrase it accurately, but I think you know what I'm asking you. And I leave you that as a question, because I think that, to us, the fight was consistency with the plan of conservation and development and the scale and characteristics of the neighborhood. Actually, Three Perry Ridge has not a whole lot to do with the neighborhood. So you might, if you re, I mean, and I don't know, if it's, if it's cheaper for you to redo, but what I found remodeling myself is sometimes it costs a whole lot more to retrofit. So I'm throwing that out as an option, as a practical option for you all to consider as we think about this. Does anybody in the commission wanna comment on that?
I have a different question, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just saying, I, you know, I, the way our regs are, and interestingly, Patrick and Mary Jenkins and I, and also Tracy, we've all been doing a lot of thinking about nonconformities. And our regs are relatively unique in what they say we discovered last night. But if you were less detrimental to the neighborhood and kept the exact size of the building, height and footprint, if you will, would that be better for you? Just a question, because to us, it should be indifferent and maybe better, because you might be, I mean, Three Perry Ridge is like no great shakes, right?
Understood. Yes, and we can, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah. Arn Wells, if you would go, and, and if you don't want to, it's fine. I'm asking it more of either one would work technically for us from a zoning perspective, but what works better for you? Arn, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sort of, I guess a related question really directed for Mr. Kozak. In one of your earlier applications, you were proposing a brand-new building, which you were able to make all-electric, which was really excited. Now, we didn't go that route, but given the extensive renovations you're doing to the, particularly to the Cohen Center, can you comment on your energy efficiency strategy, or are you working towards reduce, reducing the use of fossil fuels? Any chance for renewables here? Just maybe general comments, because I know it's early days regarding your, you know, your strategy to keep your energy costs down and the related pollution down.
I think as a responsible hospital administrator, I'm gonna pass that one to one of our engineering team to kind of comment on.
Yeah, Rich, I think that would be, Slam prepared the energy narratives that were included, so Rich is somewhere.
Yes, yeah, we don't, we don't have the engineer here. I would say, as, as we noted, we are completely replacing the mechanical systems in Cohen. I would expect that that has been done using the most, you know, modern concepts of that. I can't say whether we've fully electrified, you know, I know the building does not have boilers, for example. But we could, we could ask them that specific question and, and respond along with any other questions.
Okay, well, thanks. I must, I must have missed the energy narrative, so I'll, I'll go back and look, but thank you.
Yep.
If there aren't any other questions on three, we will turn to Chris on traffic and parking.
Yes, it's evening, so good afternoon. Chris Granatini, professional engineer with Ty and Bond located at two thirteen Court Street in Middletown. And I'll walk you through the traffic engineering study and parking study that we conducted for the project. So, next slide. So just to give you an overview, Ty and Bond prepared a traffic impact study and parking study to meet town requirements. This study followed a similar process and methodology to the previous study that we had submitted for the previous application. We know that there was a peer review that we received, and so the traffic study confirms that the project will not have a significant impact on the traffic on the adjacent roadway network. And that was affirmed within the summary in the peer review as we, as we read it. With respect to the parking study, we confirm that the existing Watson and Helmsley garages underneath Five Perry Ridge can accommodate the new patient and visitor parking demand associated with the Smilow Cancer Center, and that the staff garage located off of Lake Avenue can absorb the additional staff that's generated as part of the Smilow, overall Smilow Cancer Center at Greenwich Hospital.
Mister, Mister Granatini, you're, we'd really be grateful if you hone in on that a lot, on that last one, because everybody immediately told anecdotes yesterday of not being able to find parking in the garages. And so if you can tell us how you, just make sure that you, okay, thank you.
Hopefully, I've got enough information here to answer your questions as I go through this, and so maybe it's best if I, like, try to get through the data that I have to present, and then we can circle back.
We'll do our very best not to interrupt you, but don't count on us too much, because we're very interested in this.
Supreme Court style, right? So, and as we said, there's an existing parking management program for the Helmsley and Watson garages, so there's an existing parking guidance system that helps visitors entering the garage know where there's available spaces that's already deployed at the facility. And we will also be restarting the valet program to support the Smilow Cancer Center at Five Perry Ridge. Next slide.
Why'd you stop the valet program?
We, we stopped it during COVID with infection control and, and just hadn't restarted it.
Got it. And did you find that it was a loss not having it?
Depending on the day, but it's not a huge impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so just to walk through our methodology of the traffic study, so we did collect new traffic data in November twenty twenty-four in support of this application. And that was for the non-US Route One intersections, so Lafayette, Lake, Williams, and Perry Ridge, and the larger traffic circle at Glenville Road, Deerfield, Lake Avenue. So we counted those two intersections. And then Ty and Bond is also involved in a significant conduct project that's reviewing I ninety-five. That project had developed traffic volumes for US Route One, which had been vetted by the department and working with the town, and so we thought it most appropriate to utilize those approved existing condition traffic volumes for the Route One intersections. Our study area covers the same intersections that we studied last time. So the three US Route One intersections at Deerfield Drive and Field Point Road, Greenwich Avenue and Lafayette Place, and then the two traffic circles that I just mentioned at Deerfield, Glenville, and Lake, and Lafayette, Perry Ridge, and Williams. We've forecast, you know, future traffic volumes out. We've forecast, you know, future traffic volumes up to twenty twenty-six, which is the opening year of the, uh, the Smilow Cancer Center, uh, based on the current schedule. And then I'll get into the details of this, but we did develop a traffic generation methodology that is based on the Smilow Cancer Center program, patients and operations. And that same methodology also was utilized to develop the, uh, the parking generation. Next slide. So the trip generation methodology and the table that I'm showing on this slide um, is essentially a summary of what I'll present in the following slides, but it basically gives you the peak hour trips for the patients and visitors. That's the first kind of three lines on the graphic. The, uh, arrival and departures for the peak hours for the staff, and then the bottom totals up those two, which represents the complete traffic generation for the Smilow Cancer Center project. Um, it's based on uh, net new trips based on the daily patient arrivals and departures. Um, it considers the care program at both Watson and Cohen. Um, the new patient and visitors are orientated to the Watson and Helmsley garages and the new staff are orientated to the staff garage. And as we've talked about previously, with the right sizing of the Cohen Pavilion, um, we don't see new traffic actually going there because that program is actually getting a little bit, uh, less intensive. Um, and then the operational analysis that we conducted looks at the morning, midday and afternoon, uh, peak trips. Next slide. So there was some discussion in the briefing on Monday, um, just about how we arrived at the trip generation for the project, and so I'll try to do this as succinctly as I can, but basically what this shows you is the first underneath the pink bar, which is the Watson Pavilion, the proposed operation of Smilow, and then we've got the Cohen Pavilion under the first kind of bluish-purple bar, that's the proposed operation at Cohen. And then below that is the existing operation at Cohen, um, which, and so we've, you know, working with the hospital um, and understanding the current program and the future proposed program. By level of the building, we've developed kind of a daily patient model. Um, and so in Watson, um, as we've noted, level one was the infusions. There's twenty-two chairs, there's two to three patients per day, per chair. That gives us sixty-six patients. Um, and then level two, you've got the clinic, the APRN clinic, the rotating specialists, the support groups. Those have various patient loads. I will just note that the physician's clinic with the fifty percent discount is recognizing that patients are coming for an infusion and also a, of patient visit with a doctor in the physician's clinic, and so we took some credit for that kind of dual visit, um, within the patient, uh, within their patient stay at the hospital. And then looking at Cohen, um, I will just point out that the change in Cohen, you know, with respect to, there's slightly different patient loads with the right sizing and some changing of the number of rooms by use, uh, but the clinic on level two down at the bottom of the screen, that is no longer going to be within the Cohen facility, that moves over to the Watson facility, and so that generally is, is the significant reduction, um, at the Cohen facility that moves over to Watson in addition to the right sizing of the program. So if we go to the next slide, we tried to kind of summarize that methodology in terms of the clinic or the actual operation of the day, by time of day, arrivals and departures. And so as you see here, we've got level two, the physician's clinic, the APRN clinic, the specialist, the support groups. Those are the number of arrivals and departures by hour. Um, one question that the commission had was about what's leaving the hospital, and so we did take some credit for the pulmonary program that's leaving um, the Five Perry Ridge site and going to five hundred West Putnam Avenue. You can see there under level one, that those minuses are the credits that we took, uh, by hour for the patient turnover in the pulmonary program. And then, as I mentioned, with the reduction in some of the program at Cohen, we took a small reduction in that program for net trips, and those essentially move over into the Watson Pavilion. Um, next slide, we'll just kind of wrap up this discussion. And so in working with the hospital, you know, we've identified the net new staff and those net new staff result in these, you know, daily trips, so it's about twenty uh, net new staff and some of the, or thirty net new staff, and some of them are coming in at different times a day, so. Um, and we did account for a little bit of staff going into and out of the parking facility during kind of the midday hour. Um, we had a small incremental uh, recognition of other trips that could be coming to the hospital, and those are those other trips under the purple. And so in summary, we've got the Watson and Helmsley site trips, um, summarized by hour of day, that's essentially like the new Smilow Cancer Center in Watson, patient loading, and then we've got the staff garage and other trips um, which are summarized in the column on the far right, or the three columns on the far right. And so that's kind of the comprehensive overview of how we modeled the arrivals and departures of patients and staff associated with the comprehensive Smilow Cancer Center operations at Greenwich Hospital. Next slide. And so to put a bow on this, if I were to flip back and forth, you'd see that the patient and visitors had seventeen new trips in the morning peak hour, thirty-seven trips in the midday peak hour, thirty-nine trips in the afternoon peak hour. Similar with the staff, um, summarized at the bottom of the graphic. And then what I've given you on the left side of the slide are the arrival and departure kind of distributions of traffic, and so we looked at the roadway network, we looked at the kind of origins and destinations, and we distributed the site trips to the local roadway network based on this kind of overarching directional distribution around Greenwich Hospital. Next slide.
Don't change slides yet. Hold on a second. Mister Yaski?
Uh, let him finish. I just was clearing up.
Okay.
Um, so based on the trip generation, we conducted an operational analysis. We looked at the twenty twenty-four existing condition, and then we looked at the twenty twenty-six background condition, so that's the pre-existing condition without the site in operation. That's the middle column, and then we looked at the twenty twenty-six combined condition that's with the operation of Smilow. I will note that the twenty twenty-six background condition specifically along US Route One, East Putnam Avenue and West Putnam Avenue does factor in the implementation of the town's Route One adaptive traffic control uh, improvement project, which is going to replace the existing operations with adaptive traffic signal control along US Route One. And so that's why you do see some improvements from, um, existing to background even with the growth in traffic is because that system will provide more efficient operations along US Route One at all times a day as it adapts in real time to traffic conditions. And then the two traffic circles, so we've got the Lake Avenue, Williams Street, Lafayette, that's the small traffic circle directly adjacent to Greenwich Hospital. Um, you know, that intersection exhibits, uh, very efficient operations. Um, and then there was some question about the Lake Avenue, Deerfield and Glenville, and that intersection does have some failing operations in the afternoon peak hour. Um, but as shown in the graphic, we are only having kind of a very negligible impact on those operations in terms of actual average delay, um, at those intersections. So in general, the project is, has a fairly low generation of new traffic and is having very limited effects on the operations of the intersections around Greenwich Hospital. Next slide. So just to summarize, the Smilow Cancer Center will not have significant impacts on traffic operations. The levels of service at the study area intersections only were either maintained in terms of level of service or experienced minimal changes in average delay. Um, there was some discussion about the pedestrian crashes and a microanalysis of those crashes that are worth four. Um, no pedestrian crashes were reported at the small circle directly adjacent to Greenwich Hospital. The four crashes that occurred were along US Route One at the signalized intersections of Lafayette Place and Deerfield Drive. Um, the, you know, we feel just based on the scope of the project and that we're not orientating pedestrians to any of the adjacent intersections that improvements are not warranted by the project. Um, and that, you know, the town pursuing that adaptive traffic signal control will have beneficial impact along US Route One to those intersections. Um, next slide. Okay, so transitioning over.
Hold on a second. Before you go to the parking, Dennis, is your question about traffic?
Uh, it is.
Go ahead.
Um, how do I say this? Uh, one of the problems we've always struggled with, a couple, one, we didn't quite understand the operation, but I think we're better informed now. But to do all these traffic studies, we were always wondering where the people were coming from because you can measure what you're measuring, but if for some reason, um, the people come from, say, Westchester County and not from Greenwich, then you're overloading the west side, which is already overloaded, and we could keep going out, but Glenville has its own issues. And in your traffic study, do you ever go beyond that circle, a group of roads? And try to anticipate where the traffic might be coming? We asked this in many forums. We were trying to understand the type of cancer that was being treated, who might be, what might be your market area? Um, and where would the people come from? Because again, we view Greenwich Hospital as a Greenwich Hospital, not so much a regional hospital. And that, that all got all the way back to building new buildings in the neighborhood and everything else, but is there, is there any way, it may not just be you, it may be the hospital administration, is there any way to try to identify better where potential clients are coming from? Because it does impact traffic, particularly although I did note that you have the staff coming in earlier, you've got the scheduling, I had that question too. So you're trying to load management, uh, the traffic. Uh, so I get that, but I don't know, my, my question basically was where are these patients coming from, and are we going to overload uh, any of the particular streets, uh, worse than they already are? Does that make any sense?
I can actually quickly answer that, Bob. I think a lot of the modeling, I know that a lot of the modeling that we did was Greenwich as well as Lower Fairfield, um, and it was not that larger group, um, to, to your question, I think it's a good question to ask, uh, but it was modeled off of that primary service area, if you would.
And this modeling is based on what exactly?
Cancer rates from the National Cancer Institute.
Right.
And, and as well as projections.
So what was your input as it relates to Greenwich residents versus, uh, Westchester or New York or east towards Stanford, that sort of thing? What, what was the input approximately?
Hour of our growth.
Yeah, I mean, how many patients do you see coming from different geographical areas? And, and this was a problem we had all along, could never quite get at the bottom of that.
Well, I think, you know, what we do is we could go based on baseline, which is the vast majority of our patients coming from the median area. Um, and there is a small percentage of patients that come from the Westchester County border. Um, but really, you know, not deep into Westchester at all, it's really the lower Fairfield Greenwich area.
Well, I'm sorry to catch all of that. I mean, how many, what percentage of the patients are going to come from Greenwich, uh, as opposed to?
Maybe the exact breakdown, uh, year on year, uh, but, you know, I don't have that right now, uh, to talk about the population health side of that.
But your modeling, that's existing.
P and Z committee.
Yeah, when you're modeling, is that based on existing patient flow from existing services?
Patient flow or patient growth? What are you asking? I'm sorry.
Uh, well, I'm asking what the, the input assumptions are for the model. Are they based upon current?
Public health growth based on the specific types of cancer that we're seeing over a ten-year period.
Okay. And.
What I would say is, it's a, we can, we can answer that. I, I think, you know, it's, it's a deeper conversation. You know, when it talks about public health and the growth of that public health kind of demand, um, we need to bring it here for the P and Z committee for those reasons.
Mister Yaski, I know we talked about this last time, and I think ultimately, if your question is about where cars are coming from and asking us to look at, you know, potentially evaluating, you know, the, the slide that Chris showed about where percentages of cars are going, I think that's, that's a question, and we can, we can look at that. I think in the context, again, of a special permit application, um, where the work is primarily interior to the building, um, consistent with what the hospital is and serving those patients. Um, you know, ultimately where the patient population is coming from and what the hospital expects goes well beyond your jurisdiction. If it is a question about the traffic, then I think we can, we can talk about, you know, again, as I said, if the, if the ask of Chris and our traffic study is to look at, you know, what happens if more of that traffic comes from the east, more of it comes from the west, to the north, the south? That is, I think, a reasonable question, and we can do that. I think going beyond that and asking us to provide patient projections goes beyond what your authority is.
So let me ask Ms. Suchins in a way that's consistent with our regulations, the same question that Mister Yaski is asking you. Um, the changes that you're proposing to the hospital are in the hospital zone.
Correct.
And the intent and purpose of the hospital zone is, of the two hospital zones, is to provide for the development of hospital facilities to meet the town of Greenwich's major medical needs. That's one of the four purposes. So what Mister Yaski is asking you is, is that regulation, to what extent is that regulation being served, being met? Or is this a greater regional service, which is what he has asked in the past? So it's not beyond our scope to ask you because it does come into the very specific wording of the purpose of the hospital zones, which is that it is to prioritize the town of Greenwich um, major medical needs. Now, um, it, it again, it says the next one is provide a method for a hospital to, within the town of Greenwich, to develop adequate space to meet with, to, within the zone to meet future needs. But again, in the context of the first point, it is, are you doing the space to meet the needs of the town? So it is fair to ask you where your patient base is coming from, not only from a traffic point of view, but also from the way this regulation is written.
I understand that, that's the interpretation, and I think.
No, that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Suchins, I am not, I, first of all, as you know, the commission interprets its regulations, but second, provide for the development of hospital facilities to meet the town of Greenwich's major medical needs. It does not say regional medical needs, and that is what he's asking you is from that point of view, he is, based on our regulations, we are not exceeding the scope of our authority.
Right, and Mister Linderman just said that the predominant service area is Greenwich.
And what we were. And what we were asking for, as we look at the traffic and we look at that is, when you say predominant, is that 50%, 60%, 70%, et cetera? I, no problem. You did share a lot of information with us, um, in the past. But we're looking for an assessment of to what extent, other than the word predominant, this is a regional center. To understand that. But at the same time, we do understand, and I'm, I'm going to put this in the record as well, that, um, I mean, I know you've looked at this a million times, as many times as I have, that, um, we do have to think about what does the hospital need in order to function? What, what makes, if you look at the third, the third intent and purpose of the hospital zone, it is to promote comprehensive planning of a major hospital in conjunction with supporting facilities. So you could easily argue that you need to have some outside draw in order to serve Greenwich. Um, and I think that's what that says. But then again, you come back to ensuring compatibility of the hospital with surrounding land uses, et cetera, which I know you know, you guys all have heard us say a jillion times that I don't need to belabor it. So that's really what we're asking you. Uh, uh, and we know you've done a huge amount of work to bring this to the point of being respectful of fitting into the community, of minimizing your impact on the community. We're just trying to get our arms around what happens really with the traffic flow and parking. I'm still struggling. I still don't totally understand how the, the traffic and parking work. That's what we're looking for. So I think Dennis's questions were very fair. Oh, he's up to final thoughts.
Um, I think we need to go back just to go to parking. Um, if the, any of the other questions are sort of related to the traffic before Chris goes into the parking, we can, I think it probably makes sense to address those before we go into parking.
He's already talked about the parking. He's, I think he's kind of done. He's up to final thoughts, but, um.
Madam Chair, if I can just go back to traffic?
Yes, please. I need some help with clarification.
It may just be, I'm not a numbers person, so it takes me a little longer.
Yeah.
A little longer, sort of. I don't know whether the methodology, we have the methodology numbers available to review, but I'm kind of, it's so good that I'm kind of overwhelmed by how much information you're giving me about the methodology. And obviously it's very detailed and very thorough. But it's very, also very difficult to kind of absorb and relate that to the, the proposal here. So I wish I could have had a little more time to look at that. I think the methodology is critical, particularly to, um, the Deerfield, I'm told it's called the Lake, Lake Avenue Traffic Circle, because that's the one that's most heavily affected. And if, if I understand nothing else, I understand that that's the one that's going to go F. I'm sorry, to the, to the LOSF. Let me be clear on that, the use of that, um, on the week, the weekday PM.
It's already enough, just to be clear. It's, it's not going to an F. It's already an F.
All right. So the answer is it's, it's already in, in difficulty. So to the extent that there's any change and it's not a reduction, any change is going to make that circumstance worse. I'm particularly concerned if I'm reading the, the report properly. It looks like, um.
Can you go back to the traffic that Ms. Jenkins is referring to, so we can all, she's got?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm actually looking at not the presentation as much as 4.3 of the report, which talks about arrival and departure distribution.
Going back Dana.
If that's.
Right there, stop there.
Here we go. Yes, yes. Thank you very much. It looks to me like you have 20% from Glenville Road, which goes into the Lake Avenue Traffic Circle. And if I'm reading this correctly, 10% Lake Avenue north of the site, which is also the Lake Avenue, the leg of Lake Avenue that comes into that traffic site. So 30% of the, the distribution here is going to be in that traffic circle. And I'm particularly concerned about Deerfield. Because Deerfield is heavily trafficked all day long. I know you, you focus on, on peak times, but I can tell you that from early morning until well after your operating hours, Deerfield is a very heavily trafficked street in both directions. And because of its connection with the Post Road, obviously. So I'm particularly concerned because that is also apparently the primary access way that people get from the Post Road and 95 to the hospital. They don't go on Lafayette. That, that wouldn't make any sense at all. So I'm focusing very much on the effect of taking something that's already at LOS five. Uh, I'm sorry, F, and adding and having that particular area affected. So again, I wish I had seen more of the modification numbers. I think I really need to take a longer look at that. Particularly, I was particularly concerned because we hadn't seen, for example, the difference in the Watson percentages and timing. So again, thank you very much for that detail, but I really feel like we need to have a little more time to look at that and consider whether, whether that answers the questions that we have. So I'm, thank you and not thank you, but, but I do appreciate getting the information now.
So all of that information is in the appendix of the traffic impact study that you have?
Maybe I never got any farther than 4.3. I'm sorry.
So the table is in there, um, the distribution of the volumes is in there.
Okay.
The percentages that we used to spread the traffic around that was arriving and departing from the site is all in our, in our figures. So all that information is available to you. I will say that the, you know, while the traffic circle does exhibit levels of service F in the analysis, that we feel that the traffic circle as an intersection traffic control for that location is probably the most efficient and desirable that you would want to have there. Because if you were to convert that to some other type of traffic control to try to improve operations, you'd be looking at a traffic signal. And I don't think that that's really what the neighborhood would want to have there is to have a traffic signal that's operating at all times. And so in our view, you know, the, the traffic circle, the roundabout is, is the most kind of ideal operations for that location. And our data shows that it's only a kind of a small average delay increase. And just from being out there, I lived in Greenwich for 21 years. I used to drive through this area all the time. I've been out there multiple times in support of the previous application and this one. And I would characterize the analysis that's reported because we have to just follow the methodology. I think that that intersection operates more efficiently than we are reporting because people drive through there a little bit more aggressively than the model would allow us to think. So I think, I think that intersection is, is like the ideal traffic control for that location to process the traffic that's going through there.
I don't think, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not suggesting signalization or anything else. It's just that, again, to the extent that we have to be concerned about mitigating any possible problem that might arise there, especially if this is going to get worse. We have to address it in terms of what we're dealing with and what could be done. And obviously, on a, on the pedestrian safety side, it's much harder, the smaller traffic circle where you, you've got a lot of, of, a lot more pedestrians than you, you, I don't think I've seen three pedestrians in the Lake Avenue circle ever. So, um, thank you for the explanation and I'll, I'll do my homework a little better. I had not seen the existing versus, the existing Watson versus the proposed Watson, and I'll have to go back and look at that. Thank you.
Appendix F.
Okay.
And just to touch on the small circle.
Um, Mr. Granatini, before you go further, um, it sounds like you haven't seen the comments we got from our own traffic consultant. Um, just, I'm just going to mention them that in fact, they concur with you that the circles are the best way. They see the circles as the best way of managing traffic in the area. And, um, they do comment, of course, as you know, on the four crashes and, but the pedestrian crashes, but more interesting to me is the, the side angles because that means that people are messing up at the circle, which to your point is that you see a lot of post, of aggressive driving. However, they did also suggest that we look at what could be done to improve it. Because if all goes well for you, F might turn into a whole, something that holds you back. If, if, if the hospital does well with this project, you're not going to want to be with a, an LOSF. So their point is, is there something we could do? And they're partly looking to the town. I'm going to stop talking. You wanted to talk about the little circle, what we call a little circle?
I was just going to say that the Lafayette Place, Lake Avenue, Williams and Perry Ridge Circle operates at a level of service A with very little delay currently. So that intersection is very efficient in its operation. It's, it's much different than the, the larger circle at Glenville. And then, you know, as you noted, the the roundabout type of intersection at Glenville, like is, that is, that is kind of the ideal type of intersection control for that location.
And you may recall since you were Greenwich resident that we've heard, we heard, uh, it's quite a while ago, but it, there was a proposal to add traffic circles to Route one at one point. Mr. Yesky, you have your hand back up and then Mr. Low.
Sorry, sorry, I'll lower it.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Mr. Low, you're on.
Yeah, um, there have been several references to quote, "an average delay," unquote. And I, I'm not sure if, if that's a, an industry term. I just wonder whether, uh, specifically what exactly constitutes an average delay?
That's how capacity is calculated. So in every traffic study that you receive, you're seeing a level of service and an average delay. So that just takes the delay of the intersection over the course of the study hour and averages it out over the course of the arriving traffic.
Okay, it's not an, an, an additional delay per se then?
Well, if you look at our tables, you can compare background to combined and the change in average delay is what is the actual effect of the project. I think if you go, um, go ahead a couple slides, one slide, two slides? You go past it? Yeah. So if you look at this, by intersection, we're reporting the level of service, which is the letter and the delay, which is the average delay associated with that level of.
Okay, so it, it is peculiar to a, a specific spot that was measured at a particular time, right?
I don't understand. Can you ask that question again?
Okay, the average, an average delay is a calculation on the basis of a, the, the specific delay at a specific spot. Right?
It's not average delay in the intersection over the course of the peak hour.
Okay.
As calculated by the methodology in the Highway Capacity Manual.
But it is, it's, uh, specific to that.
Each intersection, yes.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Parking? Go ahead Dana, to the parking? Okay, so transitioning over to our discussion on the parking study. Um, and so in preparation for the application, uh, Taiyuan Ban went out and did an inventory of the existing parking supply across the Greenwich Hospital parking system. And as you can see in table 6.1.1, we've documented the striped parking spaces, which totals 1,059 total spaces. And then by each facility, we've got the total number of striped spaces. We also note the number of valet spaces that are kind of available to be obtained in those garages. And then in support of the project, uh, back in November, uh, November 5th, we did a, uh, an initial parking utilization survey. Um, that was a Tuesday. You know, we did this in discussions with Greenwich Hospital to kind of understand when they have kind of their busiest days and it was a Tuesday and a Wednesday. And so, um, and I think based on the discussions that this commission had, I believe it was on Monday, January 27th, there was some discussion around parking in the Watson and Helmsley garages. Uh, we mobilized staff and went out and recounted. And so table 6.2.1 summarizes the peak demand for each of those survey days. Um, you can see that we did, um, we did have a slightly higher, uh, demand in Watson on the January date. About the same in Helmsley, the same in Cohen. Lot D is a staff garage and the, and the staff garage also exhibited slightly over, not over capacity, but parking beyond the striped spaces, which recognizes that that valet operation is in effect in the staff garage. And so based on the parking study, you know, we were able to kind of comprehend what the actual available parking supply was in the Watson and Helmsley garages, which is where we're going to support the patient and visitor loading for the SMLO. And as we noted, that the Cohen facility is essentially just right sizing and having a slightly less demand. And so we believe that because of that, that facility is capable of continuing to function as it does today. Is there a question?
Yes, Mr. Yesky has a.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Do you need both parking garages, uh, Watson and Helmsley to, to service SMLO?
Both of those garages are connected. Both of those garages will be available to the public to park in, like during the operating hours. And both of them would be utilized to support the valet function that we're planning to implement. And so we view those as kind of one connected underground facility that splits as you come down the driveway. And so the intent is to utilize both of those facilities with the, you know, Watson being the primary location. In discussions with the hospital, the valet would be located both at the front entrance and also down below grade at Watson to kind of service patients coming in, um, to the.
I thought with the valet reinstalled, that you only need Watson. You, I know they're connected, but so is a two end zones in a football field. That's about the length. It's a long way, particularly for cancer patients. So, um, I thought, is there a separate? I, I thought you were going to only use the valet and the Watson, given the, the patient load. I mean, I don't know how many spaces are in Watson. I can't see that right now. But, um, if there's no staff parking down there, it seems like it might be large enough.
It's.
Is a hundred yards away from, from, uh, the Watson parking, or maybe more. And a, a cancer patient, it's kind of a hard time navigating that. Unless they go to the valet, which is a great, I agree, the valet is a great idea.
So the intent is to have, like I said, have valet at the front entrance up above grade to come in the front door of the hospital and to have valet down below grade at the Watson facility. So a patient would be able to pull in to either the front door to get dropped off there to go into the hospital or go down below into the Watson garage. Uh, and valet their car there.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Thank you.
Kind of use both facilities to manage parking. So that's the intent is to utilize the comprehensive parking in both garages to handle the demand that we're recognizing. Next slide. So just to walk you through, similar to the trip generation methodology, we had a parking demand methodology. It kind of leverages the trip generation into the parking generation. Um, it's based on patient arrival, appointment durations, and then patient departures. And so we, we basically would bring patients in. Say they come in at eight o'clock, they may stay for two hours, so that late. We basically would bring patients in, say they come in at eight o'clock, they may stay for two hours, so that latent. Parking demand stays within the hospital and then when they leave at the end of their appointment, it comes out, so. What this shows you in the table six point four point one is the, essentially the, the parking demand. Um, of the Smilo Cohen, Smilo Watson and the new staff and so. Focusing on like the Smilo Watson operation. That shows you that we have a peak parking demand of like thirty-six parked cars in the two P M. Hour. Um, and then it drops off, uh, from there and so. You know, the new staff come into the garage in the morning, they stay throughout the day and then they leave in the afternoon and so I think. I think you really just focus on that Smilo Watson when you're looking at the patient and visitor parking demand for, uh, the facility. Um, next slide. So the parking study findings were that, you know, we did the two surveys to kind of confirm what the existing parking demand was at Greenwich Hospital. On a normal weekday. And by doing a Tuesday and a Wednesday, those were the days that Greenwich Hospital indicated were the most kind of busiest at the hospital to understand how. Um, the program would work. Um, you know, we, we in great detail went through the operations and arrival departures and. Um. Length of visits and tried to model that to understand how people would park here. The Watson and Helmsley garages will support the center, um, from the Watson program. And as I've mentioned, we're going to restart the valet to kind of manage all of that new demand and to kind of. Provide the maximum benefit to the patients that are arriving at the hospital for, you know, important care. Um, to make it as easy on them as possible. Next slide. That's a wrap for me. For now. Take over Amy, there's no hands up.
Yeah, I, I'm struggling because. Is, is there, okay, is there a way? That you could visually graph for us? The hours where the, the existing garage is stretched. It's just, I'm struggling with. Are we looking at total numbers of trips during the window and saying, well, it all works out? But in fact, there are times when you get there and. The last time I was there, there was still valet. That's really sad, you guys. I tend to park on the street. Um, where they wave you away? Because it's full all the way up. And the, that last time I went in there, they waved me away because it was full, entirely full. That, so you couldn't even drive down.
All right, can we stop there for a second? Uh, Mark, when's the last time we had valet waving patients away?
No, yeah, that's my, I guess, thank you, you.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're just using.
Yeah, and we're pre-COVID because.
I, I think.
I've gotten into the habit of looking for parking on, on the street. I, after that, I just started like looking around and, um. Don't, I probably shouldn't share that in a public forum because it makes the traffic worse to have me driving around Perry Ridge looking.
I think pre-COVID, what before we moved a lot of these departments out to five hundred West Putnam. And we've moved a significant amount of staff since two thousand nineteen, staff and patient visits. I think the number is close to sixty thousand patient visits. That came out of five Perry Ridge and went elsewhere in the community.
How many did you just say?
Someone quote me on that number. There's a table. I think it's about sixty thousand is the number. That have come out of the hospital into outlying areas around Greenwich that have significantly improved our parking since.
That makes, okay, so that.
It's a really important point because.
Really important point because that's been, that was a disconnect we were having at the briefing, so go ahead.
So I think that's a really important point. I think, you know, you talked about the holistic kind of nature of this presentation. I think.
Bingo.
The, um. The topic that we talked about with Amy and others when we were talking about. The already progressive moving out of practices plus the new pulmonary practice going in. That takes into account those sixty thousand visits and I think that, you know, just to kind of tie. It along, if you would, you know, the story because a lot of information's been, uh, discussed here and I just want to make sure our ties all together.
Yeah, so both of you, uh, all of you, I guess. So we, y- you're talking to people who have formed. An impression that was before you moved. A lot of this out of the, out of the neighborhood. And that was one of the reasons we were asking for that overall view. The number you just cited. Makes all the difference in the world because I, it, I kept. Thinking to myself as I read the material over the weekend, how, how can they possibly accommodate a single, because my mind. Was in the waving away days. Now you're saying COVID came along and there were less visitors. Including all of us because we weren't allowed to visit people. Right? We've, so now we go and we have that impression. And it's, is there a way that you can show us that? That would be super helpful.
All right, I think that this was in my, and I've only been at the hospital for two months and I reviewed this packet. I believe that that was in the packet, but in my.
It is.
It is in the packet.
I missed it then because.
Yeah, and I, pardon, because I want to make sure that we, you know. Listen, I think the one thing I will say is that the last thing that we want is patients to have parking issues. It's just, I mean, we're on the same team with that.
Yeah, which we figure.
Something earlier which I think resonated to me is the amount of work that this team does of looking how long a patient has to walk to get to the hospital. It's what we do every day, Dennis. You know, uh, we would never want a patient to walk over a hundred yards that has cancer. It's our job. It's something that we infatuate ourselves with. So, you know, I want to make sure that that comes across. Because the, the points that you bring up here are part of our everyday jobs, you know, uh, we never want a patient to look for parking. Be sent away or have to walk unnecessarily. So, you know, that, that resonates to me and I want to make sure that you understand.
Okay, so, um, we're, we obviously, one of the reasons is we didn't get through all the material. In the depth that we wanted, I think we all gave it our best, but there were pieces we were missing. This impact of having relocated. Out of, out of the hospital, which is one of the things we talked to you about before is can you move stuff, more stuff to five hundred? Bingo, that's what you did. And it sounds like you also went to other, other, other towns even. Okay, yeah, all right.
And just so you know, it's, it's in, um, in the five Perry Ridge, uh, narrative, it is. Exa- uh, schedule A or exhibit A and it has relocations, um. Starting in November of two thousand nineteen, um, those went to five hundred West Putnam. Totalling approximately thirty-five thousand visits. So if that was the last, you know, pre-COVID. You have thirty-five thousand visits, thirty-five staff, um, and then there have been more moves, um. It's, it's just, it's, it's just over fifty-one thousand and then with the additional moves that are moving forward. It's approximately sixty thousand visits a year by the time this is operational. And a hundred staff.
Okay, and then since Mr. Kozak came up with a sixty K. Number, so. And the, even with all the success in the world, Smilo is going to.
The sixty thousand visits that Mark came up with was based on the detail that Amy just said, right? I, I think, Mark, that's.
So I'm just saying, but the second half of my, sorry, sorry, but let me just finish asking the question. And that's what. The new Smilo, the expanded Smilo will not fully offset.
Yes.
You then move some more stuff as pulmonary goes to five hundred. And pulmonary is, pulmonary is, is, some of it is shorter term, right? Some of it is short visits, right, for rehab?
Their, their physician visits, their pa- patients are in and out, in and out.
So it's, it's, it's a lot of people looking, cars. Okay, so you move that out and five hundred has that huge, has a nice parking space. Um, so where you're ending up is that with all these changes. You are not offsetting what you've gained from that and somehow I missed that table that you had and I apologize, but. It's also that you're not offsetting and it's that analysis, I think, maybe I, I'm alone, but I wasn't capturing. So that, I feel so much better because literally I've been parking on Perry Ridge at those meters. Now, when you're.
Come to the, come to the garage. We welcome you. This, there's plenty of parking.
All right, um, Mary, you momentarily had your hand up, so you were going to follow up on that.
I'm sorry, me?
Yeah, your hand flushed up and went down. I mean, that happens sometimes if you just.
Okay, that, that's my computer. Don't worry about it.
Okay, um, anybody else have questions about what we've heard so far? Mr. Yesky?
Just to humor me, could you guys come back and just show, I think you can do this. That you, you can handle all the Smilo patients in the Watson side of the building with, with a valet. I mean, I, I don't know how many spaces are in there, but. It's got to be, uh, and it just, it's, just humor me, okay? Uh, and I get, I get your moves in and out. By the way, what did you move to forty-nine lake? I, I know it's in the document somewhere, but this, there's a lot.
We have a blood draw there. We have a, a, currently have a urology practice there, um.
No, but what did you move out of the hospital?
Um, what's planned to move out of the hospital there is a surgical practice. Dr. Petros's practice actually is planning to move back there.
Uh-huh, okay, so I'll be back at forty-nine lake again. Okay, all right. That's okay. I go there for the blood draw and for Dr. Strombakis and by the way, eh, if you see me in the hallways, please don't hold it against me. Thank you, all right.
Your wealth.
Yeah, final request on energy efficiency, uh, uh, apologize, you. You obviously did provide energy narratives both separately, very much appreciated on the Watson. Uh, Pavilion and the Cohen Pavilion. Uh, our Energy Management Advisory Committee, you know, reviewed them and the comments were generally positive. They did have some suggestions and so the request is if you could share. What our E-Mac group came up with their suggestions with your mechanical engineer, maybe you already have. Uh, that'd be very welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely. That was one of the things that we will, um, look at. That, that was going to know sort of, um. We had that comment. We also had, um, that sort of follow-up, um, as Chris noted from Beta about. Um, the, some of the crash data, um, all of which we got yesterday and then listened to your briefing meeting, so we will.
Yeah.
Attend on addressing those.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just bear in mind that with some, the same thing happens to us. There was something, I saw something as I signed on tonight that, this afternoon that. Had come, I think, from you. Additional narrative. I mean, there was no chance that I was going to catch up with it today. So, yeah, I mean, we're, sometimes we're running behind the eight ball. Um, some practical questions, uh, yes, Beta raises some questions. We weren't wildly enthused about the R R F Bs. Anyway, so I was kind of glad to hear Mr. Granatini, um, say it and he can, he's shaking his head. Uh, it, it seemed not consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. Um, it, and so if there was. Um, I, we have a problem that definitely people don't understand that the thing says yield. And people bomb through everywhere, okay? Um, so Beta says, what else could we do? And it's some of it is the town, um, the sewer question. You're going to have to give them volumes based on, um, what we've heard, what you knows, what you're projecting. Is your take that you're going to have more a significant change in your sewer, sewer affluent up or down? Um, because they're asking, they're asking you for your flows. Hello, Mr. Ginter.
Good evening, Dave Ginter from Greenwich Amade. Um, I talked with Rich this afternoon.
Ah, perfect.
So, you know, we are working on getting him, uh, the data. Uh, primarily it's existing conditions data. Uh, we are also pulling together the, the proposed. Uh, for the outbuildings, I'm not concerned about, uh, you know, increases given historic uses of those facilities. Um, the, the problem is, is some of those buildings have been vacant for years. Uh, so if, if the town's protocol is only to, to look at existing water usage over the last, call it four years. It's a slight increase. Overall, in the hospital and Cohen, I'm not worried about it. It, it should come out fairly similarly. Uh, you know, it's, it's, we're not getting rid of a lot of non-used, non-flow attributable space. So at the end of the day, it should be this, it should be close to a wash.
Um, okay. Um, I don't know how Feminella looks at it. Do you, Patrick? Do you know how he looks at? Um, if something has been vacant, whether he, he counts it as a zero, it counts that as the base or whether he says this is what it would be if it was in use.
I believe it's the number of fixtures in the building and then based on the occupancy, so there is some.
So there's, it won't be zero. The baseline won't be zero, which would.
No, but that they, yeah, it's, it's that accounting that needs to be provided because he's not going to go through the building per files and, you know, look for fixtures.
Um, okay, so, um, that, um, and also, Mr. Ginter, we puzzled a little bit about what they might be looking for in terms of downstream. Improvements in the horse neck line.
Hmm.
We were guessing he might be looking for lining, but that was just conjecture, so. Uh, we're just as interested probably as the applicant to see what. What is, what the numbers look like and what is proposed.
You will not be getting an answer out of him, uh, I can almost guarantee it before this application closes. Uh, so we'll issue the letter that states that we're willing to, uh, do whatever is necessary. Uh, you know, obviously post, uh, post decision. Uh, this is in line with, uh, comments. Uh, the last couple of applications for this particular one, as well as other applications in town. Uh, the, the downstream analysis, unfortunately, he does not do that. C D M. Smith. Uh, is a sub of, of the sewer department and it usually takes them some time. Uh, to, uh, work out what those exact details are, uh, where, where are those improvements, uh, if any, need to be made downstream.
Then it would be extremely valuable to us. If you all were able to give us the layman's version of. It's bigger than a breadbox or it isn't. Just tell us whether. You, what the change in the flows, whether it's significant or not. If it's a decline, that's great. If it's significant, but if you, it would be, that's really whether Mr. Feminella then comes and asks you for improvements and what they are. And you guarantee that you'll do what it takes for not go forward with the project, all good, but the question is then for us is. What's the likelihood that this will go? At, you know, I try not to use a, a sewer related term. So you know what I'm looking for. I want to make sure if it's not a big change and there's not a whole lot of flow, additional in, flow. We can be fairly comfortable if we have that data.
We, we will certainly get you that data. We'll certainly do our own calculations. At the end of the day, it's, it's Rich and C D M. Smith that. You know, verifies the numbers that they, you know, want to, to look at. Um, but I will say that if there is an increase. Um, the way it's, it's typically handled and it has been for years in the horse neck sewer shed, as we found out in other sewer sheds where there's now known problems. Um, you, you know, the, the work that is performed in other areas downstream. Offset those increases, so any storm water that eats up the capacity is taken out so that at the end of the day. The flow going through that sewer line remains status quo and that's certainly brilliant.
You missed our discussion yesterday. I, I don't remember seeing your name on it. But, yeah, basically we gave the example of another project on the horse neck line. That was at a hundred and twenty because of I N I, at a hundred and twenty percent of cap because of I N I. And, uh, lining it, uh, I don't remember what it brought it to, but it was acceptable with a very large increase in flows. So we're aware it can be addressed, but I think is, that's really what we want to know, how, how big, I, from what I'm hearing. I, I'm not seeing a material change in the flows.
I would tend to agree.
Yeah, I, I, but again, you know. Uh, this is not obviously our field, um, but we just have to be respectful that the sewer department won't approve anything that is. That changes that, that is in, significantly exceeds the demand generated by what the current zoning allows, which. It would mean. I don't even know what it would mean for the smaller buildings, but that are in the, in the, in the residential zones, but we can deal. I think it'd be important, Ms. Suchin's, and, and, and Mr. Ginter, that you break down the, any flow changes. By zone, so we know, so we know exactly. Do it by application, so we know exactly what you're dealing with. Um, so it's, and it's by application, which is as it should be for us to render a decision. Um, the next thing is that, uh, again, uh, I think Ms. Suchin's, you heard us yesterday. There were a couple of the ARC comments we didn't really follow. I think you're planning to go back to ARC.
Yes, we are. And I think what you heard in Ally's presentation, um, was frankly, what we've been able to address with respect to those ARC comments, um, the cross-section and, um, you know, the demonstration of what the constraints are with removing and why those trees need to be removed, um, are in response to ARC. So they had not seen those. You had the benefit of risk, of us hearing the comments and making the revisions for today, and those will be presented to them tomorrow.
Nick, did you have any comments on the ARC comments since yesterday?
No, I have not.
Okey dokey. So if y'all are okay, how about if I turn to public comment?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Um, Mr. Berkeley earlier on, uh, referenced, uh, made a comment that included, uh, the words, uh, allows for growth in needed services. And I wondered what, um, if you could perhaps comment on, um, on the, whatever expected growth that, uh, to which you're referring and, uh, and what that growth, uh, might, uh, signal for, uh, in, in terms of an impact on the hospital and the neighborhood.
Certainly, well, uh, thank you very much for the, the question. And what I, I will leave it to colleagues to respond momentarily, uh, with some more specific data and thoughts around that. But I, I think it is more a, a comment around how cancer care has evolved over a period of time, and it continues to evolve. And the, the equipment, the care, and quite frankly, the infrastructure that we have today, are we able to meet the needs of patients? Yes, fortunately, we are. But is there an opportunity for us to meet them even more effectively with the investment that we're talking about? Without a doubt. So again, this is a, a thought around trying to enhance the quality of care and keep up with the pace of change and the science to make sure that we are delivering the best possible care available to the patients of Greenwich. Bob, I don't know if you wanted to pick up there or over to Dr. O.
Yeah, I can, I can.
I was just gonna say, it's probably best if you do, cause it's some of the conversations we've had.
Well, thank you. I mean, as I said, there's so many new therapies. I'll give you one example. There's a class of drugs called theranostics, which are really directed treatments that deliver radiation through an intravenous injection rather than through external beam. And, uh, those treatments are actually, uh, complicated to give, but can be done here at Greenwich Hospital. But right now, patients who need that therapy, uh, have to go into New York City or up to New Haven.
Up to New Haven.
The goal here is to really provide this kind of next level of care to patients in the community of Greenwich and, and, and the Lower Fairfield County. I've been seeing patients here now for several months. And most of the patients, most of the new patients that are referred to me are really from Greenwich and, and, and Lower Fairfield. And they are, some of the patients are actually people who might have gone to another center, like in New York City or up to New Haven or elsewhere, to get the kind of level of specialty care that I'm able to provide as a prostate oncologist. So I think that's the idea is to make sure that the community is receiving these treatments without having to go elsewhere, and I think we can provide that for them.
And, and so, uh, if I'm reading this correctly, the, uh, the assumption is that you're able, you will be able to, uh, provide these services with the existing capacity that you will achieve um, with, with what you've proposed here.
Yeah, patients. Yeah, exactly. Uh, patients are living longer with cancer, and they're getting multidisciplinary care. And we have excellent programs here already in breast cancer and classical hematology. We have an excellent Myeloma and Boma program. So we have a lot of strengths, but we also recognize that people leave the community for care because they perceive that they can get better care in, 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 in other places like New York. And our hope is that we can keep more of the patients here who, so they don't have to travel for that next level of care. And that's what, that complexity of care is what all cancer patients are really expecting nowadays.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Um, I had one more, um, I mean, I'm parking, um, the, um, uh, um, Friday, uh, the MSK opened their facility in Fairfield. And I was just wondering, uh, if there were parking numbers available at all that you guys could swipe in comparison, just for, to know how that is laid out, um, in terms of patient demand. Because since it's as equal a priority to you as it is to us, or a greater priority in many ways, because you're dealing with a vulnerable population that isn't gonna wanna be driving around. Um, so if that was available, I'm just throwing out the question because I was reading the article today. It's weird how the news hits and also the groundbreaking. And White Plains is building a new garage with twenty-five hundred spaces. I think I read that right. White Plains Hospital. Uh, that's mind-boggling. Mind-boggling. That it, they need that much, uh, so, um, additional parking. Um, okay, uh, everybody good for public comment? Cause I think that might be significant. We have quite a number of people here. All right, um, our first speaker is Barry Cohen. And then Joanne Messina, you are after Mr. Cohen. And anyone else who wants to speak from the public, um, please raise your virtual hand. Uh, we will be hearing this again. Uh, Ms. Dr. Cohen, if you would go ahead.
Should we time limit this, Madam Chair?
Yeah, three minutes.
I've got three people so far in addition to Dr. Cohen.
Okay.
Um, and I don't think he normally, let's see how it goes. Yeah, why don't we do three minutes? All right, go ahead, Dr. Cohen, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm on the, uh, Hospital Advisory Committee, um, as well as on the Board of the Greenwich Lodge. So I, it would have been nice if I had gotten a traffic report in time to take a deep look at it, cause I took a very deep look at the previous one.
Well, you'll have time now.
Yeah, I know. I have it up on my screen, and it's the, the variation between the, the previous twenty-twenty-two study and the current study is dramatic. So my first question is this signal adjustment that the town is gonna make, and it's gonna reduce, uh, the delays at intersections. Uh, that, was that taken into account in the twenty-twenty-two study? Um, or is that just now? Uh, because, uh, back in the twenty-twenty-two study.
Mr. Granatini, you could answer.
No, the answer is no, Madam Chair. The, 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 the idea of, uh, the concurrent pit phase, I don't think came out until uh, end of twenty-three, twenty-four. So I, I doubt it was something that was disclosed, but.
The other thing is, Mr. Granatini, I believe you're listening, the, the concurrent pit phase has a lot of lack of support in town. We'll just put it that way. Um, I didn't wanna mention it before because it is what it is, and you shouldn't be held accountable for root one, but it's not clear to go through. Go ahead, Dr. Cohen.
Yeah, it's really, well, by the way, I'm not afraid of numbers. I've, I've taught statistics for thirty years. And for instance, the question about the average delay, uh, sometimes the standard deviation or range is nice to have along with it. So that you know what is the maximum delay within that time period. But that's just, uh, but I noticed that, um, the traffic delays, the intersection delays were, were much lower back then. And I saw the twenty-twenty-five background projection from Ty and Bond, which doesn't match anywhere near what the actual twenty-twenty-five, uh, thing is. But, but what I wanted to see was something more about additional trips. Not the total number of trips, uh, in the, in the future or twenty-twenty-six when it's operational. But how many more trips are gonna be added compared to what we have now? Do you have a table with that?
It was in the presentation. It's in the traffic study.
Yeah, what we'll do is we're gonna put, we're gonna make sure the presentation's in the public record and available, so everybody can look at it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Right, um, by the way, on table three, I, I was good enough at numbers to see that it added up to a hundred and five percent on the side. I don't know what that was about, but anyway, um. There, there was, there was a five to ten percent, uh, item, line item there. So I, I noticed that as well, but it, uh, it, it, uh, if you said it was ten percent, it could, you get to one oh five. And, and if you use five, you got to a hundred. Um, well, anyway, uh, so one problem, of course, is that the category F, LOS F, is, is an open-ended category. I'm being played off like at the Oscars. I hear the music.
Yeah, you're three minutes.
So let me just finish the, well, I was, you know, someone else spoke to, but, um, but the problem with category F is that no matter how much worse it gets, it's still F, you know? And so, uh, that can be a little misleading. But I thought, um, Mr. Yeski and, and, and Mary Jenkins really, um, did much of the job that I was going to do in terms of these traffic comments, but I need to take a deeper dive, um, and I'll get back to you.
You'll have another chance.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, the next person is Joanne Messina. Ms. Messina, if you would go ahead. And after that, William Merer.
Good evening, um, Joanne Messina, resident of, um, Perry Ridge Road and formerly of Church Street. So I've been in the neighborhood for over thirty years. Um, I first want to also acknowledge that I am on the Hospital Neighborhood Committee, which was created after the second, um, proposal to planning and zoning, and I think that was a good thing. So I've heard a lot of what we've heard this evening. Um, I think in a general sense, um, this is far better than what we've heard in the past, and I was really pleased to, to see the concept as it's being presented by the hospital. A couple of questions. Um, one is, I do wanna also, um, go along with Commissioner Jenkins about the mature trees, as we've talked, and I know that the commission has talked about before, mature trees um, and canopy trees are something that we really treasure, especially in this area downtown. Um, and just replacing them does not do the same thing. So again, also would like to see that. Question, is the public area, um, outside where these walls are still a public area? Um, the part of the garden area that is not for patient and caregiver? That was one question. Um, moving on, on Three Perry Ridge, I was curious as to the house. You speak of that being one property, but you don't speak at all about that house or what's being done with that house. Um, number three is not within the scope, but I just wanted to ask what was being done with some of the other houses. The hospital owns many houses on Perry Ridge on William Street. Um, and they are in disrepair. Um, so I'm very curious as to what is happening with those where there are not um, departments moving into it. Um, I think that's it for now. I'm glad they're coming back. There may be more questions, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, does anybody wanna answer the question about the future of those buildings? Or not? It's not part of this application, so you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, um, most of the homes, and I know this has come up in some of the discussions with the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, um, some of the homes are currently used and will intend to be continue to be used as housing for, um, hospital employees. Um, there are things, um, obviously, post-COVID, the hospital's now focused, um, on, you know, some, um, called site improvements more broadly and, and looking at the properties. Um, so all of that is underway, but um, I think with the exception of the ones that we talked about, um, in the area that are converting to the, um, you know, some other space, meaning fifty-four, fifty-six Lafayette, um, which has been medical office, thirty-eight lake, one-three. The houses that are, that operate as residential properties will continue to operate as residential properties, um, in this proposal.
Yeah, I think, um, you were also being asked about upgrades to them, but it did, it's not part of this application.
And not part of it, some, certainly something that the neighbors have made us aware of and, and we're looking into.
All right, thank you, Ms. Suchin. Our next speaker, I believe, and our last speaker is going to be Peter Quigley. And Mr. Quigley, if that is indeed you, if you would identi, oh, we do have one more speaker, if you would identify yourself.
Sure. It's Peter Quigley. I've been a twenty-five-year resident in and out of the RTM, uh, with five terms and a mi, member of the Harbor Commission. Uh, the P and Z's heard me speak before. I'm not quite sure where to begin. To wait for three hours to speak is very difficult. I actually was going to speak to the Brunswick, uh, pre-application on their, um.
Don't go there. Just get to, get to the hospital. Get to the hospital, cause you've got limited time.
I'm gonna get to the, I'm gonna get to the hospital. One, the town one does not have the ca, capacity to take away sewer with stormwater. I'll leave you with that. Demonstrated by the ninety-five million dollar, um, cost to fix Grass Island plant. So you should have your flood and erosion control board and DPW in on this, whatever it is. However, to thank you all for three hours of waiting for the few comments, the issue is parking. It's abominable. And to say it's abominable, I was there two weeks ago as a user. Who on the planning zone's been there this year as a user in the last two, two, three weeks last month? Anybody? Well, go there because I had to circle around to find a parking space in the main building. Parking is terrible there. It really is. And I think you need a lot more information that they can handle what is becoming a transition of a local hospital to a regional hospital, to quite frankly, a national branded Yale Smilow Center, which now is increasing the population with all the other development of land use that are being okayed in town. Increasing the population of births, increasing the population of baby boomers. That parking area is abominable. So if you think five hundred West Putnam is, is taking care of, uh, parking, drive by there someday and see how crowded they are. You've got a major parking and traffic issue in this town because of what is being opened up to the volume of uses of things like the hospital. It's the volume, not so much it's needed, but you can find these other services, specialties in Stanford and in New York. Unfortunately, when you increase the uses, and it's uses, that you're increasing everything else that you gotta look at. The volume of the uses, I'm sorry, it's, it's volume. I'll leave you with those thoughts. I don't know if I can wait around another three hours for Brunswick, but thank you very much for being, you, the P and Z, you do an incredible job. I mean, covering all of this, but you've gotta start to attend to what's today, not what was four years ago in COVID. In COVID, this, this village, this town was discovered, and you've got an increase probably of thirty percent of the population of Greenwich. It isn't being recorded and clearly not being taken in account for traffic and parking issues that are gonna create a nightmare for the people that have been living here. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. I hope we'll be around for the Brunswick pre-app. Thank you.
And you timed it perfectly, Mr. Quigley.
Well, you, you always keep me timed, Margarita. Thank you. Thank you.
Alrighty, our, um, our next speaker is G A Burns. Um, by the way, Ms. Cohen, that's Peter Quigley. Q U was, the last one was Peter Quigley, Q U I G L E Y. And G A Burns, I don't know the first name. And that should be the last speaker. If you'll just unmute. Mister or Miss Burns, and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm calling about the Three Perry Ridge situation there.
Yes, sir.
When that building was built, the, the P and Z, um, you know, refused it. So it went on an appeal, opening up the street to Division. So the P and Z said, no, they couldn't do that. They went to the zoning board of appeal. And they claimed hardship to open the street based on three things. They couldn't build a road, in-and-out road, because there wasn't enough space because of parking. Um, secondly, they didn't want ta, traffic on Perry Ridge Road. They wanted it on Division Street. And third, they say it would, would be cumbersome. Um, well, they certainly have enough land now, so that the first reason for the hardship doesn't exist. There's an entire, what, one or two acres available for parking. There's an entire, one, one or two acres available for parking adjacent to the building. And, um, well, traffic is an issue on all the streets, not just that. And the third thing is it would be cumbersome. So, uh, what I proposed is that they put the parking on the William Street property. I think there's one, one and a half, maybe two acres that you can see from the corner of the, uh, Three Perry Ridge, you can see the cancer center. It's flat, goes straight out and across. And then patients could walk in. Okay. Second thing is they're saying that they only need, um, they don't need any hospital parking. The doctor's office only needs eight spaces. You've got twenty spaces there now. Now, my experience is when they say they don't need parking, they only need this. Later, they come back and expand the parking. So I would suggest that they just restrict the property in this variance to eight spaces and put in plantings over the other spaces. That will eliminate any issue of, uh, too much traffic on the street, too many people parking there incorrectly. Uh, the solution of putting a gate up, this solution's been proposed before, before this very board, they approved the gate. And the gate is there. It's never been used, or has been used for a little period. So they want to put gates entering and exiting. I don't see the point of the exit gate, particularly since garbage trucks will be coming in that gate, so it's not really an exit gate, as well as delivery trucks, mail trucks. So I think they, if they're gonna put a gate, it should be on the entrance and let people enter through, um, talking to the doctor's office. Um, they're gonna have to let people in. But to put an exit gate, look, they fail, cars get stuck, people are in there, and, and as I say, the garbage truck comes in there all the time and has to pass through that gate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I've, I've provided documents and also the hearing notes from the, the fifty-nine planning board of appeal. Because the P and Z refused the, uh, to open the dead end.
Okay, thank you. It's in the public record, I, I, as I recall. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Maro?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a couple of observations. I'll try to keep it within three minutes for sure. Um, I'm a member of District Seven RTM, and I've been following all this over the years. Uh, my first observation is, is somebody who lives on Perry Ridge and drives and walks around the hospital neighborhood and streets, I regularly observe slow-moving and unsure, unfamiliar driving, you know, drivers who are looking for hospital entrances. And to me, it's common sense that there's gonna be a greater percent, percentage, even if the total number doesn't go up, a greater percentage of unfamiliar drivers in the neighborhood with this expansion. And it just seems like common sense to me and, and the kind of sort of defensive posture when the question was asked for additional information about the percentage of drivers who are gonna be coming from Westchester and Stamford, which again is common sense that we're gonna see some of that, I just want to reinforce in the minds of the committee that we should see that data. They didn't bring it. They didn't have the information today. But I would really like to, and I think the committee would like to see the data relating to specific assumptions around outside traffic, which common sense would suggest will be there. Relating to this and the traffic issue, it'd be great if planning and zoning would require a follow-up study, like eighteen months after, and if this proposal is approved, using the identical data set, so we can compare what the projection said versus actual traffic for future reference. Um, I think that would be very informative for the town. The last thing is I take the traffic studies conclusions about that there'll be a net zero impact on pedestrian safety. I, I just take an issue with that. Right now, the traffic warnings on the different exits uh, to parking are, are not sufficiently labeled for safety. The exit in, from the Greenwich Hospital underground parking has a sign when you leave that's, that alerts drivers that they're pedestrians, they have to stop and look out for them. The Smilow exit does not have identical signage. I know because I walk to the Y, and it's not unusual for me to have to stop because someone pulling out of there doesn't notice that I'm walking. And it seems to me that that needs to be addressed in general, but given that there's a chance, at least, that there's gonna be more traffic and more people coming back and forth, the hospital has to double down on that kind of signage on exits. I also want to reinforce Joanne Messina's point about the unused buildings. They, they've been moldering over the last few years. The, 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 the residences across the street from the hospital and the top of the Perry Ridge Road are hardly ever used. The one across the street from the hospital hasn't been used for years. I think this is all being glossed over. These buildings are deteriorating. To say at least some of them are all being used is, is, is just not accurate based on my observations. I think something needs to be done to stop these other buildings from continuing to molder. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Anything else from anybody in terms of comments going forward, things you're looking for? I think, I think Ms. Suchin's has a pretty good idea of where our open questions are right now. But she can confer with Patrick as well. It's not a bad idea, uh, um, for us to go check out your garage, because I have not tried. And I now know that it's Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So, uh, with that, um, I had something else I wanted to ask, and it's left my head, so hopefully, um, Patrick can send it on to you guys. Um, if there's, um, Nick, did, did, did you want to add something since you just turned on your camera?
Nope, I'll get here.
Alrighty, um, so, um, we'll see you when you come back. I think it would be be great to have at least some of the sewer things answered and then to continue to help us get our brains around parking and traffic. I remembered signage. It is true that, um, some directional signage is very helpful. But there was, um, a pause at one point when we saw some signage ideas that you all had. We would want any proposed signage program to be very, to be low-key also and not look, I still get lost at the Stanford Hospital, but it has those huge signs and they're so commercial and they're so non-neighborhood. And, um, so if you consider safety signage, it would be good to keep in mind this whole thing about consistency with the characteristics and of, of the town. That was, uh, because yes, it's a great idea, but at the same time, huge blinking signs, not the direction, and same thing with the RRF bees. Um, anybody else? No? Okay. So we'll see you when you're ready to come back.
Uh, Madam Chair, when we do need, given it's a public hearing, we do need to continue to a date certain.
Mister, um, do you have a date certain? Um, you, um, we had for tonight, we had must-open.
We have three days, Madam Chair, to, to, uh, sign it at the meeting.
So what, um, when do you think you're gonna come back to us with answers? There's a big question. I'm not seeing Mr. Ginter anymore. There's a big question on when Mr. Ginter's gonna have his flow numbers ready, when you'll have gone to A R C.
We are in A R C tomorrow, and I expect that, um, based on our materials, I, I do think that we can wrap up at A R C tomorrow. It is just, um, Five Perry Ridge, that remains. Everything else, um, seventy-seven, uh, the mechanical will be dealt with separately. Um, and thirty-eight and three were both approved, subject to. So it's really just the main discussion about the healing garden. Um, and, and that on, on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, and Patrick, um, it sounds like they think they can have all the answers to us for our next meeting. Would we be able to accommodate them on that agenda?
I don't think that is plausible right now, but, um, we, so it would most, most likely be the first meeting in June, which would be the third.
And how close are we to decide at that point?
Uh, we would have, uh, ten days, I think, left at that point.
After that, so.
Right. That's about right.
Okay, so, um, and when's the first meeting? And Joan, let me check.
Uh, third, I believe.
Yes, it's June third.
Yep, June third. Okay, so there you go. We would put you on the June third agenda if you want to have a date.
We will see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
You too.
All right, um, Patrick Tracy. Um, I don't remember hearing that ever that we have to give a date when we're continuing. Um, can we just check out the legal references since Ms. Suchin does?
It has come up before with, um, I, I, with Mr. Smith, some of attorneys who don't.
In other words, the people who teach the class, it's the CBA class, so I would like to check. Oh, Ms. Cullen, I almost removed you from the meeting. Um, I would just like to check that because I, I, I know, I know they mentioned it. I remember Mr. Smith saying something about it. Okay, folks, it is seven oh three, um, time for dinner. Um, question for you. An anonymous commissioner said that fifteen to twenty minutes is a mad dash. Would you guys like to have more time from the curmudge- from curmudgeon number two? Because curmudgeon number one is, you know who that is.
Let's ask Arne.
Let's reconvene at seven thirty.
It's a deal.
Oh, say it's the anonymous.
No, he wasn't the anonymous one. No, he was not. He was not the person who said to me, it's hard to get everything done.
I understand. I apologize, Arne. Sorry.
That's quite all right. Apology accepted.
I support, I support your thought and the anonymous source.
I'm pausing the recording, everybody. Somebody make sure we start. Okey-dokey. Hi, Kelly. You need to unmute. Or I'll call you. You're still muted. Um, you want to try talking? You're unmuted now. In, if you go to the audio setting, you know, the little audio icon on your computer screen? And if you click on the Chevron and you go to audio settings, you can turn up the volume of your mic and make sure that it's on, or the other thing you can do is test your mic. Because some, because you look unmuted, but then we can't hear you. And yeah, you're right. Um, what happens is that I wiggle my mouse piece and then I get muffled and I don't understand why people are talking over me because I'm not, I don't figure it out. Usually Lo is around to tell me that I've moved my mouse piece again, but sometimes he.
Would you like me to tell you that? I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, usually you go, you're muffled, we can't hear you.
Well, you know, it's just, how long can we let it go on for? It's, you know?
Yeah. I don't know. There's, she's still, we still can't hear her.
Who, her?
Um, Ms. Cullen. Okay, so, um, is everybody back? Yes. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete. Okay. Alrighty. Okay, all right. So just, um, yeah, uh, Ms. Cullen has trouble hearing me when I wiggle my earpiece around, so that, I'll try really hard to stay still. Okay, so now we move on to application number seven because six was postponed. And we go to the Burning Tree Country Club. And who is speaking for the applicant? Kindly raise your virtual hand.
What, what happened to number six?
It got postponed.
I'm sorry.
This afternoon, we got an email sometime this afternoon.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And figure out if it's a car park or a lacrosse.
You can't talk about it.
I, Nick, I thought it was postponed.
Hey, there you go. Okay, whoever is representing Burning Tree, kindly raise your virtual hand. Who is it, Patrick? Do you remember? What, what are you doing?
Tessie.
Is it Tessie?
No, it would be, it, of, of the two twins, I think it's Hagni.
No, I think it's Bristol. I think it's Chris Bristol.
Mr. Bristol, miss, Mr. Bristol is going to, uh, make the presentation, unless he's not here, but I think he is.
Um, not Chris Bristol, not, oh, there he is, uh, Mr. Bristol. I'm promoting you in spite of you not having raised, there he goes. All right, bye, Mr. Tessie. Okay.
Thank God you didn't say Hagni.
Well, I've done it before. Okay, so Burning Tree Country Club for a final site plan and special permit to demolish and reconstruct the pool building, expand the poolside deck, demolish and reconstruct the paddle tennis building, confirm that this is actually an enclosed paddle tennis building, renovate and expand existing pavilions one and two, along with, um, the associated drainage and site, uh, work on a hundred and fifty-eight proper, proper, eight-acre property at a hundred and twenty Perkins Road in the RA two zone. And so, Mr. Bristol.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Christopher Bristol, representing a Burning Tree Country Club. Um, as Madam Chair had, uh, accurately described, uh, this is for a, a general, uh, facilities upgrade, in particular, uh, uh, replacement of the poolhouse, uh, renovation of two pavilions, uh, new paddle tennis hut and, uh, uh, removal of the kiddies, uh, kiddie pool, installation of a splash pad and, uh, some other, uh, uh, you know, pool deck type improvements. Um, I guess just to get to the basics, engineering, uh, has approved. Um, so that's okay. Uh, we have our wetlands permit. Uh, Health Department indicated, you know, that the state has to review this, this splash pad and that we have to go back to them in the normal course for building permits and as this is a, uh, sort of septic system site. Um, uh, I guess easy question, no, it's not gonna be a pickleball, it's gonna remain a paddleball. Um, paddleball court, um. We went to A R C, uh, twice already. Once, uh, there was, uh, noted some discrepancies in the plans by A R C and they had made some comments. We submitted some updated plans. I went back to them a second time and, which is now, as indicated, in staff report, electronic return for just, uh, some, uh, some relatively minor items, uh, such as, uh, um, uh, window treatments, uh, making them more consistent throughout and, uh, some tweaks perhaps to the, uh, to the, uh, new uh, paddle hunt, paddle tennis hut building. So we're, uh, getting those in order uh, and are about to submit those to, uh, to A R C for the electronic return for their review and approval. Um, we did, uh, make, uh, also updates to the landscape plan, um, as conservation wanted initially. We added a bunch of, uh, more native species, um, and as A R C made a couple of mentions, uh, in particular, I think we had uplighting, uh, in some of the columns or something like that, so we removed those um, as requested by A R C. So, uh, all that is, is underway and, and looking pretty good. So we removed those, um, as requested by ARC, so uh all that is is underway and looking pretty good. Um, zoning enforcement, I think, had mentioned that they were okay with, that he was okay with it, except for, you know, checking compliance with the photometric. Levels at the property line uh in the package or as a photometric plan, which we we do, we do maintain that, we do keep that um standard in order. Uh, there was another uh re- revised, updated EMAC narrative that was submitted prior to this, prior to this hearing, so you should have that as well. Um, I know there were some questions about the parking, so what I did, um, I don't know if uh Pat or Tracy got a chance to. Look at it yet, but it was just a very, a very small um parking chart to, you know, to show how the parking sort of massaged its way. Over the past few years. Um, in two thousand, in two thousand eight, which was the approval for a new tennis court. Um, there was two hundred and eighteen uh spaces plus seven ADA for a total two uh two, two hundred and twenty-five. Um, then when we came back for the paddle tennis, for another paddle tennis court. Um, it was noted in that approval that we restrike the area that's closest to the tennis courts to add five spaces. Uh, to compensate for the two that were lost due to the construction of the paddle tennis court, as noted in that uh approval. Um, now, over time, uh in the intervening period between two thousand twenty-one and now. Uh, if you look, uh, you could look at if you want the site plan, there's the uh, there's the uh play area that's near the paddle tennis, the existing paddle tennis. Uh, paddle hut uh building. Um, so you'll notice that there's a, you know, there's a a paved area that's very next to it. And if you actually look on the, on the site plan or the zoning location survey in that area. Um, I didn't realize what they were at first, but they were markings on the ground, they're not space layouts, they're markings on the ground for children to play. So what you'll see in that area is uh, there's a play area there and there's a pavilion that's sometimes used with the, with the camp kids program. And what they did over time was during camp season, they would block that area off so that the kids can play in that area. Uh, where the, where the parking spaces were and where the, the uh other access was. So arguably, that shouldn't have been, I mean, I guess arguably, I couldn't have, perhaps shouldn't have counted that in my initial calculation. Because there, you know, there were, there were, uh, there's barriers up for some of the time, or we could, you know, so. I I perhaps that's my miscalculation, but if you look at the.
What is the situation now?
I'm not following.
Yeah, I could just tell us what the reality is now, please.
For, for exi- for existing, we, I had the facilities manager make another count of the parking space today. And there was existing, there's two hundred and thirteen plus nine ADA for a total of two twenty-two.
Okay.
Which is, which is three different than, than back in two thousand eight.
Okay, so can you submit that to us in writing on a piece of paper? It looks like part of an application rather than just giving it to us in the meeting.
Yeah, no, I I I understand, I know it was a question, it took us a little bit to, to, you know, for us all to discuss and and figure it all out. But we're, we're not that far off from what the, with the original was in two thousand, in two thousand and eight.
Well, we had a lot of different numbers floating around, okay. All right, so, um. You're going to give us that in writing and show us where all the parking spaces are.
Yeah, yeah, as I said, I mean, again, I know it was, it was last minute, it was only a little bit before the meeting, but I did prepare a chart. So I mean, it's, it's a very small chart, but I'll, I could send it to you and submit it separately.
Maybe you could, if you have it in your email or something, or you could just quickly send it to Patrick so he could take a look and.
I, I sent it to Pat and Tracy a little while ago, I know they were busy, so I didn't expect them to.
They're remarkably good at multitasking.
No, I know that, but I guess I.
But it might be small, I can try and share.
Don't share it, all I want to make sure is that we know how many parking spaces.
Yeah, and that's what I'm actually, that's, that's what it shows, actually, it actually shows the progression for the past, for the past few years. So it actually makes sense once you, when you, when you look at it and you, and you. If, if you, the, I know that, if you want to go off topic, that's fine, but the area that I'm referring to is actually, if you look on Google Earth next to the, next to the pool. It actually shows the barriers up and the kids, you know, the chalk, the painting on the ground where they were, where they were playing. So it's apparent when you look at it, although I wasn't aware of that when I was just looking at the plans.
Patrick? You're muted. I can't hear you. Can anybody hear Patrick?
Nobody can, but it doesn't show that he's muted, as you pointed out.
No, now you're muted. Whoa, what is with Zoom?
Volume, try volume.
No, I mean, you could try, but why would it stop working? It's been working for him all night. I mean, Kelly came in with it not working.
It was virus, she, she released a virus.
All right, I'm going to ask you to unmute and see if that makes a difference, I didn't try that with Kelly. Try again? No.
Check, check one.
Why don't you go out of the meeting, come back in?
There you go. We'll, we'll wait for you, we're going to ask about the surface of the playground in the meantime, so then, then we'll come back. That's Kelly's suggestion, she says end the meeting and then open it again, remember, and that worked for us.
Well, that will be the next step.
So conservation wanted um you to change the surface of the playground?
Yes, I don't think that was, on our updated plan, uh, I think it still shows it as, as uh artificial turf.
Right, and conservation issued updated comments dated four thirty and recommended an alternative playground covering. Such as poured in place PIP, rubber surface or prefabricated rubber playground tiles instead of the artificial turf.
Uh, if that's what the commission wants, I guess we could do that, I mean, I don't, I haven't heard anything from our team about a, a particular uh objection to it.
Okay. Alrighty, okay, so I just looked at the laundry list, is there anybody else who um has comments or questions? All right. And no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead, Peter. One question yesterday about the volume calculations.
Yes, I, I, if we missed them, we missed them, I know, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't um.
Nick, what, the volume calculations, Nick, do you remember that question? That had to be yours.
Uh, yeah, I don't think they were completed for the uh, for the whole site.
Right, we need, I have a note that we need the volume calculation from the applicants.
Okay, we could provide that.
Yeah, it typically can just be a letter from the architect.
And then, did we get any updated comments?
I mean, I'm sure it's over volume anyway, so, but.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's all, all things considered, actually, it's not, it's not too bad, actually, the, the, the building, the biggest buildings are the, are the clubhouse and the pool house. And you know, although the, the pool house is getting bigger, it's still, you know.
Right, yeah, we just, we just need, the architect can do a letter with the numbers.
Tracking numbers.
Is there an updated EMAC?
Uh, I don't know if there's a, we, we did submit an updated EMAC, um, let me check the staff.
But I thought EMAC had EMAC re- reviewed it and responded, that's my question, actually.
That's, yeah, no, that's why I.
We heard back from EMAC.
I was gonna say, as of yesterday, I don't think there was any.
Let me look real quick through my email.
Would have been Laura D. Bonaventura.
Last one I have is.
It would have kind of come from Bianca.
Oh, yeah, right.
Last one I have dated was March eighth.
Yeah, that's the original one.
Yeah, then, no, there's a different one that we, that we.
Yeah, yep.
All right, Mr. Lo.
Oh, I'm not, the, I was just going to ask about the revised energy narrative, number one, and then um, did we? Did we get all the details we needed from ARC?
They're doing an electronic resub. So we should be okay there.
Yeah, it's the, the, I mean, there's some details, like there's some window treatments, you know, throughout that they wanted to be more consistent, uh, there was some um, perhaps uh. Uh proportional dimensions of the cupola or some um.
Okay, how about, how about this splash pad approval from health?
That the health department noted that uh we need to have the, the, the state review it before building permit.
Uh, that was all, sorry, we've already covered, wasting everyone's time.
No, not at all, it's good to go back over the list.
No, we don't, we have not received any updated comments um from EMAC.
I will note that the, the updated one was much more comprehensive than original, so I mean, it was, it was substantially more in-depth.
That was actually from, from you, Mr. Bristol, to the uh Energy Management Committee?
Oh, no, it wasn't for me, it was from the architects, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, okay, so, but they submitted it, but we never heard back from EMAC on a review of that one.
Correct.
Right, Tracy?
Okay, correct, we haven't gotten updated EMAC comments, other than what were already in the staff report, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would, I would not, I would not try to elevate myself to speak on matters of energy and efficiency.
Oh, and the only other question I see was, I know we've explained the parking, which we were confused about, but then there was a question about parking for special events.
This, uh, I, uh, I could explain it, but I, I think that the uh property manager, uh, Harris Coble might be on the call as well. So he might be able to better explain it. Yeah, I can explain it, but since he's the person.
Here, hold on a second.
Maybe you could just say just a couple of words.
All right. He's kind his way in. Mr. Property Manager, would you kindly first unmute and then when you do so, just identify yourself with your first and last name, spelling your last name.
Hi, yeah, thanks for having me, I'm Harris Coble, uh, General Manager at Burning Tree Country Club, um, last name is Coble, C O B L E.
Okay, thank you, okay, go ahead, um. Yeah, uh, event management.
Sure, so um. Valet parking for, for any large events and we consider that any, anything more than a hundred people on a special event. Um, and we, you know, handle it ourselves for our, uh, handle valet parking ourselves for any uh in-house, non-private uh events. So, anything over that hundred person mark, we handle through valet parking.
Okay. Who, I don't.
Where do they park their cars in?
Uh, still within the existing structures, or within the existing parking lots, um, although they have the ability to stack cars. So they can, you know, sometimes double and triple capacity, um, the only area that they, that we utilize. Outside of the normal parking structures is a golf staging area specifically at night, um, when we don't have golf cart parking, you know, in that area. Um, and then, you know, we have one very large function annually uh on Labor Day and we actually utilize our golf course to, to further stack cars at that point.
Is it the first fairway there?
Yeah, yeah, on the first fairway, exactly.
Anything else from the commission? I'm going to ask for public comment, is there anyone from the public who has comments or questions on this application? Kindly raise your virtual hand. Anybody from the public? Nobody, okay, um, what do you guys think? Can we close this application? All right.
Subject to staff receiving the responses that were.
All the responses, no, Mr. Bristol, we did not ask you.
I wasn't offering that for.
Signals to the commission.
I was, I was just indicating my agreement, I wasn't, you know, if you want me to stand still, I will.
It was a good one, no, it's just funny, you're like, well, go ahead, okay, does anybody?
Letting them paying attention.
Does anybody object to closing this application?
No.
Alrighty, um, in that case, uh, this application is now closed. All right, um. And we'll um go on to a hundred Clabberd Ridge. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Coble, Patrick, do we dare give you a shot?
Can you unfortunately hear me?
Yay, what did you do?
I restarted my computer, so.
Kelly Cullen, that may just.
Yeah, there, there's something, I don't know, somewhere in our break, I guess, my uh, my, my microphone had a conflict, so we're, we're done now.
I, I lost my whole system during the dinner break and had to restart, so something happened.
Okay, so, um, there was a pretty significant update earlier today, because it took me a really long time getting in. At three.
Yeah, I ran those at three o'clock, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, so let's just go on to a hundred Clabberd and pretend that everything's good. Um, who's representing a hundred Clabberd? Kindly raise your virtual hand. And it's Mr. Hasland. The first thing we're going to do is ask him to talk.
He's shy and retiring.
Okay, just say something, we just want to know, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Yeah, okey doke, all right, so it, um, a hundred Clabberd Ridge LLC for a final site plan and special permit. To remove an existing detached garage and pool and construct in addition with attached garage, pool, pool. House and patio to the existing single-family dwelling further exceeding the a hundred and fifty thousand cubes. At a hundred Clabberd Ridge in the RA two on a five point two four five acre property. And me, please proceed, Mr. Hasland.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Chip Haslam for the applicant. Uh, this matter was actually on an agenda for you in early April and uh at the briefing session, uh, my clients were uh listening, they were not then my clients. Um, and uh got concerned that the commission had uh had concerns about the project itself. And they contacted me shortly thereafter because we'd had a, a prior relationship. And I think Maria Vila is actually um in the audience right now, who's a principal behind one hundred Clabberd Ridge. Um, and I said, I, I attended that briefing for another client and I listened to your matter and I didn't think it was that bad. I thought there were just a couple of small issues that you had to address.
Well, you know, maybe to someone who doesn't know us, we sound grumpier.
Uh, maybe that's it, but it was that and the staff notes and, and I think department notes and it's, it's a little overwhelming if you're trying to do it yourself.
Yeah.
With, with um, your engineer, um, so in any event, uh, I said, I think this is what the commission needs from you, is they need to have a. Landscape plan that's assigned and sealed by a landscape architect. And so they uh got Alexander Mock to do the plan and Bill Rutherford, who's the landscape architect, to review it, sign it, seal it. And uh you have that uh in your uh file. And the other was that EMAC seemed to be a bit underwhelmed by the narrative that was put together, so we beefed that up a bit. And based on the EMAC comments, most recent comments, they seem to be satisfied with that, they did make. A couple of recommendations, which my clients will certainly consider in the development process, but other than that, it seemed to be a favorable uh review. Um, the other, I think it's unrelated issue, but it, it was raised and conversation was. That there had been apparently a violation with regard to open space that.
Yeah, it's an old violation and they're working on it, Patrick commented on it at the briefing.
Yeah, since my understanding that, in fact, it has been resolved, but uh hasn't been implemented yet, the solution. And once it's implemented, that uh, that violation will go away. But again, that's, they're, they bought after that violation had even happened and they're one of four properties, so they have limited um. Uh, ability to control that situation, but I'm told that it's been resolved. It's going to be uh implemented and uh that's kind of disappear. So I think that's the only issues that uh came up in the briefing yesterday, I wasn't able to attend that, but uh Tracy thankfully. Uh, let me know what you folks discussed and I appreciate that. Um, so uh, other than that, unless there are questions or comments, I'd ask that the commission approve this application.
You know, um, if you could comment again, and again, I maybe have missed, may have missed something, but. There was a uh discussion of the sort of eyesore nature and noise of the air conditioning compressors. How that was dealt with and the suggestion. That it be, that geothermal um instead of gas be considered, can, can you comment on those two?
Yeah, as I mentioned, there were two recommendations from EMAC, um, which my clients will take under consideration. Um, this house is an old house and I don't think that solar is really a, a good solution for this. They mentioned geothermal as a possible solution instead, so certainly will take that into consideration. And obviously, any noise is going to have to be avoided so that it meets the noise requirements.
Okay, so um, uh, my question, the next question is, is for the. Uh, the uh powerful uh commission uh people who are so knowledgeable in this. And uh that would be Patrick and Arne, et cetera, but what?
And Arne and Patrick, and then Arne and Patrick.
Yeah, but, so. When a um, an applicant says, well, this is something we're certainly going to consider or whatever, something, is that, where does that leave us? Um, I mean, do we have any uh, you know, I mean, where, where do we go with this?
Can I answer that, Pat? Go on, Arne. Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's basically the bully pulpit and I, I do want to give credit to the applicant. For taking the request for a beefed up uh energy narrative and actually hiring Steve Winters Associates, which we've. Work with and have a really high opinion of. Uh, but, well, we, you know, we can't, we can't by Connecticut state law. Ask for more than what is in the building code. The good news is the building code every two years gets more and more stringent in terms of energy efficiency. They're coming in with, and they, they did energy modeling, now, this is pretty nice for a single-family home. The EUI is low, it's twenty-four, uh, so. So, right, we, we also ask for EV chargers, but it's really. Uh, it's up, up to the applicant to decide whether they want to do that, the, you know. Uh, Chip has said they're going to consider it, I'd, I'd say. Let's take the win in terms of coming back with a responsive energy narrative, that's how I'm reading this and. Hope they will consider some of the EMAC suggestions.
So I, and I'll be the. So I, uh, and I'll be the, uh, the devil's advocate, whatever it is, uh. So would it be, uh, uh, this is for Mister Hasland. Would it be cynical of me to suggest that? I could be listening to lip service being paid to an issue like this. And I'm not saying that to confront anybody or any, I, I just, I get frustrated hearing that. We have suggestions that are, uh, that are provided in earnest and has the, the greater public good at heart. And we're all here on a volunteer basis. And sometimes I get frustrated that, um, an applicant or. His or her representative that just kind of brushes us off a little bit. So I, if you could provide some context to that, uh, I'm hoping this app, you know, this. This apprehension of, of what's going on.
Well, I think it's helpful that we, um, did hire a consultant to indicate, uh, what. Steps could be taken to minimize the impact in the environment and, um. You know, I, I think that, uh, the EMAC, you know, recognized that, um, they did have a couple of recommendations to us, but they always have recommendations and, and some may be. Much more stringent than any applicant would, uh, want to undertake, but. Um, certainly when they're well-founded and, uh, and presented in good faith to the applicant that consider this. You'd be reducing your footprint and maybe actually be saving some expenses yourself in the long run.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, at some point, sometimes we enter into a win-win situation. And it becomes a bit of an educational exercise, perhaps even for the applicant who had, may not have considered such a thing. And although the upfront cost in, in some case may be higher, but down the road, et cetera.
Right.
Uh, a- 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 any context to that, you, you know, I, we sit here or I sit here anyway. And I think I just kinda shake my head sometimes, not, this isn't leveled at you or, you know, th- this particular applicant. But it is, it, it's a source of frustration and I, and I'm sure that there may be others on this, uh, commission that share it.
Well, I think it's a creature statute to a large extent, but, um, the way it's applied. And here it's really, um, as Mister Wells pointed out. Uh, it's really the obligation of the applicant to create an energy narrative that is responsive to what the, what EMAC's looking for. And then for EMAC to make its recommendations beyond that, it's only a, a good faith relationship between the parties as to what's actually undertaken.
Right.
You know?
Yep, okay.
Okay, um, going back to the, um, landscape plan, you did get comments back from conservation. Um, they said, um, it, the current planting plan is an improvement on the previous. And, um, they would still like to see more native plantings. Um, so if we could just ask the, ask you to continue to work with our staff on that. Uh, to finalize it, if, um, you're able to work, um, towards a greater mix of natives. I didn't follow a question they asked. They would like to confirm that there will be no removal of green space or plantings. Other than the evergreens mentioned in Mister Martin's email. Um, do we have an answer to that?
No, I don't understand that either. Um, it's, uh.
I think it's a sensitivity to the open space violation, but I, um, I don't follow that. Does anybody? Tracy, Patrick, do you follow that? Okay.
No.
We'll just, okay. And then, of course, just confirming the tree protection plans. Uh, they were uncomfortable, it looks like, with the exemption. Um, but it's really up to DPW, so we will leave it there. Um, okay.
Good.
All right, um, do I have any comment from the public on this application at a hundred Clabberd Ridge, a hundred Clabberd Ridge? Any comment from the public? Kindly raise your virtual hand. No. All right, so with that, um. Does the commission object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hasland. And so we go to our discussion item. Uh, which will be Mister Hegney. And I, um, I'm assuming that, um, oh, I just tried to get him in and it did. All right, you've been, uh, Mister Hegney, you just muted. If you would unmute. Okay, Mister Hegney, I assume Mister Philip would like to come in? Would like to speak?
If he is, uh, able, I wasn't sure he was gonna be able to attend this meeting, but, uh.
All right.
If he's around, uh, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, all right, um. All right, so this is Brunswick School. This is a pre-application discussion from Brunswick School, um. Pursuant, uh, for a text amendment to change section six two oh five, note seven B. To allow a point one oh FAR in the RA four zone. To construct a proposed indoor sports facility on two parcels totaling forty-three point four five acres. At a hundred Clifdale and twelve seventy-five King Street in the RA four. Go ahead, Mister Hegney. I have a feeling we're gonna have some questions. There were a lot of comments and questions yesterday.
Oh, I was able to attend the briefing yesterday and I, uh, I do have, uh, and, uh. Met with Mister, uh, Philip and, uh, Kathleen Harrington from, uh, Brunswick, uh, this morning. And, uh, I think we can, uh, address many of the comments that came up as part of, uh, the, uh, discussion at the briefing yesterday. As you mentioned, this is, uh, a little over forty-three acres that is at the corner of Clifdale and, uh, King Street. Uh, this is the east side portion of the campus that, uh, the school was able to acquire. Um, a number of years ago and is now the middle school. Uh, with, also has a, a track on the southern portion of the property. And we constructed a tunnel to, uh, uh, join it with the west side campus, uh, a few years ago as well. Uh, on the northerly part of the property, uh, there are dwellings which are used as part of faculty housing. Uh, this particular structure that we're looking to, uh, to build. Uh, will straddle that property line, so we'll, uh, combine the, the properties so that they're one parcel. So that we don't have a property line, uh, that the, uh, the building itself, uh, crosses. Um, this is, uh, set up as an indoor practice facility, uh, with bathrooms and mechanical space. Uh, it will be heated, uh, but it will not be air-conditioned. The, uh, building itself will be about nine hundred feet from King Street. And because of the topography, King Street is lower, uh, there's a ridge that runs through the middle of the property at one hundred Clifdale. Uh, you, it's unlikely that you would see this building, uh, from King Street. Uh, it's also about two hundred and fifty feet from Clifdale Road, uh, and as part of, uh, constructing this. The, uh, uh, the school would be putting in, uh, some screening along Clifdale. Uh, uh, along with the existing foliage that's there. Uh, this particular site was picked because it does, uh, have a very little, uh. In the way of trees on, on it. There, there's a large, uh, open lawn area. Uh, so that if we were put at someplace else on the campus, uh, would involve a lot of tree removal. Um, there is an existing parking lot, uh, that is, uh, to the, uh, east or the, behind the classroom building. Uh, and that's the parking lot that would be used as part of, uh, the, uh, use of this building. The school would be looking to use it for the middle school students, uh, for their other, um, sports programs. Particularly the, the, uh, high school students that come out from, uh, from Mar Avenue. Um, and one of the questions that came up yesterday that I, I really wanna touch on right off the bat is, uh, what does the town get for this? Probably not the best way to word it, but, uh, I talked to, uh, uh, Tom Philip this morning about that. And he said, this would be a facility that would be available for other schools and for youth groups. Uh, in town, uh, to use. Uh, there is no other facility like what we're proposing in town. Uh, and it's unlikely, uh, given the, uh, current, uh, fiscal constraints that the town seems to be dealing with. That, uh, another type of facility like this, uh, could be built, uh, elsewhere in town or it would be part of the, the public school system.
Um, Mister Hegney, before you go on, you've got two hands up. Maybe they wanna interrupt you and ask some questions. Mister McCray?
I think Mister Hegney should, you complete his, uh, presentation before we get into.
Okay, all right, well then I will assume Mister Lowe's answer is the same.
No, that was wrong.
Okay.
Um, Mister Hegney, realistically, I, I appreciate that, uh, the large S, uh, of Brunswick and Mister Philip. But i- i- it seems to me the demand for, uh, this space is going to occur. When there's inclement weather and that the, when that happens, that the, the school itself, Brunswick, will. Uh, be filling that, uh, demand. And while I'm sure there'll be, uh, lots of opportunities. When, uh, uh, an enclosed space is, is not required, uh, because of good weather. I, I wonder how much, um, how much supply the school will actually be able to provide to outside sources. Uh, that would be attractive to them and in, uh, under any conditions. So I wonder maybe at some point, you don't have to do it right now, but you could just comment on that before I forget what I was going to say.
I have one general comment and then I'll ask Mister Philip to respond, uh, partic- in, in specifics. Uh, the town of Greenwich i- is not, uh. Uh, well endowed with, uh, athletic facilities. There, it's hard to get court time for basketball. It's hard to get playing time for all of the different field sports. Uh, we, we are far behind some of our other, uh, communities in the area like New Canaan or Darien or, or Ridgefield. That have adequate athletic facilities for their community. We really don't. And to have something like this available, even if it's not available to all, all the time. I think is a real big asset for the town. I'll ask Mister Philip to respond in particular. To, uh, to what, when he would think that this would be available to outside groups. Tom?
Should I speak now or is that okay or?
Yep, that's great.
Yeah, so, um, I think you answered it perfectly, Tom. The, um, clearly. Brunswick's gonna fund this. It's on Brunswick's property. It's gonna be a Brunswick facility, so that's gonna be the priority. I think that. You know, if you use a situation in the fall and inclement weather and a couple of our teams then decide to move indoors and use the facility, that, that's obvious. But I think we've got a pretty nice tradition that we're very proud of, of, to the extent we can, making our facilities available. To the town, whether it's giving COVID shots in our gym, which obviously we did when it was needed and available, um. To making, um, fields available to G Y L, um, a- and that type of thing. One of the things I think Tom was gonna touch on, but I can hit right now, is that when we were exploring possible sites for. This facility, we very consciously decided that if we were gonna do it. We wanted to do it on the east side of King Street, on the property that was the former Tudor, uh, property. Because that's, that, that side of the street, that land is not encumbered by, um, limitations to use. Which is not the case on the, on the west side of, of King Street. All the land on the west side of King Street. Was funded through municipal bond offering when we initially bought that property twenty-five-ish years ago, whatever, and. I think we have ten or twelve more years, um, before that bond is paid off. And so every year. We have to submit a very detailed accounting to the municipal bond, the issuing authorities of the non-Brunswick use. And there's a very clear limit on how much non-Brunswick use there can be, um, and that's limited us, um, not, not. It has nothing to do with what we charge for the property. It's what the property is used for, so, um, we've been limited in our ability to let. Non-Brunswick, um, um, uses ma- make the hockey rink available to them or. They are, some of the artificial fields that are all on the west side of King Street. On the east side of King Street, there's no limit there, so. Um, yes, the bulk of the use is gonna be Brunswick. That's why we would build it. That's why we would fund it. But we would very much like to also make it available to many of the requests we've had that we've had to deny in the past, such as, again. Greenwich Youth Cross, Greenwich Youth Football, um, um, we've even had requests when Greenwich High School was. Uh, redoing their gym. Could they use our gym? And we, we had to say no because we couldn't, we couldn't allow it. We were at our max of non-Brunswick use, so. Um, I think the point Tom's making is that we, 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 um, are very fortunate to be in this town. We feel very fortunate, um. To have the, 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 the large number of Greenwich residents that we have as part of. The Brunswick population, we're a little less than seventy percent are Greenwich residents. And so we'd like to, to the extent we can, give back to the town if we have that opportunity. And this seems like a great opportunity to do so.
So, uh, if I may, um, during, um. First of all, during months when the school is in session, do you envision, uh, offering that i- as an available resource to the town?
Yeah, I do. I, I, I think to the extent that there are reasonable requests to come in, that are, are ones we can accommodate. Um, we would be open to it to Greenwich residents. We, we're not, this is not gonna be a profit center for the school. We're not gonna open it up and. Rent it to non, you know, that's not what we're, you know, it's obviously also non-business related income, which we're not allowed to do anyway. So this would be, it just would be a facility that we would not have any encumbrances on if there were requests from. Um, the other institutions in the town that wanted to make use of it. We know that Sacred Heart right down the street would have a great interest in making use, um. Of this facility and, and one of the donors is particularly interested in, in to the extent we can build this on Brunswick property and fund it through Brunswick. That we also could make it available to another institution in town like Sacred Heart, so we're totally open to that.
Yeah, and so, a- and then during the school year on weekends, when, um, just to pick an example, you might, uh. It, it might be great weather and, uh, Brunswick has a football game and maybe on a Saturday. I don't, I don't, I actually don't know what the, when these football games take place, but whatever it was, but if. If the weekends, uh, you know, were not a time when Brunswick would be using it. That would also be a candidate time for other entities within the town to avail itself.
We, I, I, I think we'd be totally open to that. Again, considering all the normal things we would consider, is it, is the. Request reasonable? Do we have the parking for it? Is it gonna add to a volume that we don't want on the product? Um, I mean, you, you used to mention the example of a football game. If we had a major football game across the street.
Right.
You know, we probably are not gonna say yes to using, just because it would add more traffic than we want, but, but, but there would be no reason for us to say no to that. Whereas now, A, we don't have the facility, but B, we have wonderful facilities, squash courts, hockey rinks, all these things we have to say no to. Because we cannot open them up to, to, to other non-Brunswick users.
Okay, uh, thanks for that. I appreciate it.
Um, Mister McCray, do you still pass?
Uh, no, Mister Hegney, um. So everybody with the resources could use the site. Um, how does the increase in FAR to the point one inform the project? I mean, would you just be just under? The point one FAR to accommodate the project or is that building in, i- is this more of a round number that you want to?
Uh, it would bring us up to about the, building this facility on the campus would bring us up to about a point. Oh, nine, one. FAR. So the, the current limit is point seven five, point oh five. Um, the reason that I, and I, I do wanna get into the, this discussion, uh, the reason that I was suggesting a point one. Is that's what the regulations in six dash two oh five, uh, seven, the note seven. Provide for nursing homes and assisted living facilities.
Mister Hegney, this is not a nursing home facility. This is a practice field in a very, very large building. So let's, let's, let's just toss that argument out, that thought. This is something completely different than a, a nursing home or something. Specifically, it's an educational use and it's a full-size football field. So let's, let's take it as a full-size football field in a big building, not a nursing home, okay?
Yeah, the, the comparison though, from just a planning, pure planning standpoint. Is that these types of uses, be it a nursing home that has dining rooms and. Other facilities that it needs for its residents and schools that require dining halls and meeting space and auditoriums. They generally need larger spaces to provide for the services for whoever they're serving. Whether that's, uh, people in a nursing home or students in a classroom. So from a planning standpoint. Uh, it makes sense to allow for greater square footage to, um, to permit those kinds of uses that you need. In those kinds of facilities. And that, that's. In those kinds of facilities, and that that's the only point I was making, and we just happened to have the. Nursing homes of point one in the four acre zone. And we're currently at a point. Point five. For the point seven five for the. For the schools, I think putting it at a point one. Where you can provide a facility like this on your campus. I I don't see where that there's a drawback there, and I think from a planning standpoint, it makes a lot of sense.
Seventy-four thousand square foot facility. No air conditioning, so basically. You're running. You're running October. To. Say April with the building, because I think anything other than that. This building is just going to just heat up. Unless there's some kind of a venting system or something to it, because it would seem to me. You've got a limited use on this only for the cold weather, only for a per portion of the year. Without the A C, and I think that kind of gets back to. A nursing home is occupied twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, it's a living building. This one, not so much. It's only living if there's somebody who's practicing. And I don't believe that they're going to be practicing when it's a hundred degrees inside because the sun is out. So I'm having a little, some kind of difficulty with the point one oh F A R. I need to look at that in greater detail because I think there should maybe a better way to do this. If we're looking at a large building. On an educational site of a certain size. Maybe there's a way to actually kind of narrowing this down, so I don't get. Very large buildings on pieces of property all over the R four zone.
Can I answer, guys?
If we did discuss this, Mr. McRae, and perhaps Mr. Philip can. Can respond to the the use question in the summer.
One of the designs. Design thoughts we had. With the facility is that the. The decision about not air conditioning is is a funding decision and and and, you know, the additional cost that that would have, there is going to be. Again, if we build it, there would be ductwork and venting and air exchange, but the other thought was that the size of the building. Could have either louvers or. At some various points garage door type things that could open up so that in in. Warmer weather, there would be some air exchange, but there still would be a roof, you know, would be, so it would be usable in the event of inclement weather, but there'd still be air. Exchange and not not too hot, the only, and I I defer entirely to Tom. And the legal expertise as far as the F A R, but but again, you know, the 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 decision. And it falls to you, of course, but but. The decision about the F A R, there's plenty of F A R for us to use on the west side of King Street. The decision was, could we go in front of you and see if there was any flexibility? To build it on the east side of King Street where we're slightly limited by F A R. And the reason for that would be because it doing it on the east side of King Street, we would be able to. Provide more openness for you, so that was that was the decision, I mean, we, you know, the. Building this size would fit in the F A R on the other side of the street, we just think. You know, that limits us for at least ten plus years of of not being able to make it available to anyone else.
Okay.
And and just to follow up on the. Does the, is a point one. F A R sanctr sanct here, no, I think the the discussion we had as part of the Greenwich American Center and residential use on that site. Was what type of number works to allow you to. Construct what you are proposing to construct now. And perhaps I was just using a round number and one that we already have in the regulations for other special permit uses in the four acre zone. But it doesn't have to be a point one, it can be something less.
I'm going to let Arne and Mary go and then I'm going to come back to some of the theory around changing the F A R, but go ahead, Arne.
Thank, just a a question and a comment for for Mr. Philip. And understand about funding. Limitations that makes complete sense. Just thinking in terms of operating costs and going back to the air conditioning. Because the Cohen Center over in Old Greenwich, you know, they've got. Total solar on top of it, and they're going to be selling excess electricity. You know, if you had additional funds, you could put solar and probably would. Least from an operating point of view, pay for the air conditioning.
Planning to put solar on it to pay for the heating, so the the expectation is that whole roof on the. I don't know how the solar side works, but but the plan was to to heat it and use solar energy to to run the place.
Okay, that's that's great, then second question is, I'm sure you've thought about it, but. Just looking at Google Earth, you do have that big track and field on the east side, could you not just put a building? Over it and cover it, or do you really need the additional field?
So so we looked at that, the the answer is, I guess we could, the the issue is. If we put a building over the pre-existing field and track, that's an even bigger building because it would have not only a football field, but the. Add width of the track around the football field, and that building is right on King Street, so you know, you would you would. See it without fail, whereas. The the luck of of the positioning of this proposal is that it's. Built into a hill, it's a very large building without a doubt, but would really not be seen in any significant way at all from King Street. And it could be hidden on the on the on the. Golf course side by large trees because it's built into a hill, so. The answer is yes, we looked at it, but we discarded it because it just would be incrementally even bigger still than we would want to build.
I guess just follow-up question, maybe more for Mr. Hagney, so the the turf field there and the track does not count as impervious or F A R? That's a that's a freebie.
It counts as impervious, but it does not count as part of F A R.
Great, thank you both.
All right, Mary?
Yeah, I just want to second Nick's comment about. With respect to the. There's such a visual difference between a large athletic building with no windows. That has a kind of commercial feel to it versus a nursing home, which is just a specialized form of residence, so I want to second Nick's. Nick's concern that that's probably not a particularly relevant. Comparison, but I guess my my other question was, since you're not using, you're not hitting up. Should this should this go forward as a text amendment if you don't hit the zero point one? You're going to have F A R still available for further development. And my question, and if you were at the briefing yesterday, my question is, are there? Is there already some thought as to how you would use the additional F A R under that new? Limit?
Good answer is no. And if we. Are moving ahead with just this, getting the floor area. To permit this structure to be built, that would be acceptable as part of this application.
Thank you.
So yesterday we got into a little bit of a zoning theory discussion as well, sorry, Mr. Philip. First of all. Well, then. What do you do with the fact that we've not let? Greenwich High School do the same thing? And get a bigger F A R. So then you say. Is the broader conversation, and Mr. Philip, this might make a little sense. That we should have an educational use overlay where we determine. Consistent with the strategy for all the town zones. What the F A R should be for an educational use, and you have an educational overlay, that could be something. But to pick the R A four. And to change its maximum F A R. For an educational use with no context other than one facility that wants to be built. Really comes down to. Either inconsistency or. I almost spot zoning because. Because you're, so. I feel like the theoretical approach, sorry, I have to, we have to think in these terms, Mr. Philip, Mr. Hagney is used to it, but. It doesn't make sense, so then what do we do about the schools that aren't in the R A four? And they come to us, G A comes to us and says, well, we want to do something more and we're maxed out, and you gave Brunswick. Extra. That's where we have to be fair and consistent, and. Then the other thing we talked about was. There's a very purposeful plan in the town to keep. Reducing the F A R as you go into the big zones. And if we begin to bend that. That's really not consistent with our plan of conservation and development, as you know, any amendment to a regulation. Has to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which has, you know, you've heard me say it a million times, conserve community character is our first. Preserve community character is our first and highest objective. So that's where I'm stuck on the thought pattern, on the thinking process, on the theory. I mean, okay, I did say yesterday that the building looks like a Walmart, but you can fix that. And that it would be really not so pretty from the street, and I figure you just threw something out there to get the application here, you weren't really going to make it look like a Walmart. Because that's not what Brunswick does, but. I'm stuck on the theory, Mr. Hagney, and. I believe that. I I've kicked it around a little bit with Patrick and because we've been talking about overlay zones. And whether they would be more conducive, so I would leave you first. Oh, last point. Every now and then I find a regulation that we have in town, do you remember the one where you can't have an emergency walk-in medical center that is within? Less than two miles of a hospital?
I think it was three miles, actually.
Okay, it's like totally bogus fake. Yes, we had that, why? Because an emergency medical center opened and. A a hospital that we know didn't won competition in the area. And so somehow or other, the zoning commission prohibited the use if it was going to be. Too close to the hospital, which really. Is spot zoning. And in a way, this application is akin to that, it theoretically is akin to that because. You're making a regulation just to accommodate a specific. Individual use, a specific individual application, and that's not good zoning, so. To me, so I'm stuck there, and I would say since we're at the pre-app. That you, instead of fleshing out all the plans. You either go back to the point seven five max F A R. And just then go ahead or come back without doing anything with plans. And convince about the text amendment, let's not focus on the building as much about. Let's focus on the text amendment, because I have trouble with the text amendment, that's really what this application is.
Can I ask an ignorant not? But.
Absolutely.
Everything, everything you said makes sense, I'm sure Tom's going to hit, kill me for saying it, but I totally get where you're coming from and respect it and admire it. I assume it's a given that. If an institution or person owns property on either side of the street, you can't carry F A R over a street to the other side, right? I mean, that's a given, I suppose, or.
We had a big discussion about that yesterday because we were not, we didn't think you could. I would gladly do it if there was a way we could merge your properties, but I don't see how, because you've got, you've got the intervening street.
There is a statute that prevent, that permits transfer of development rights, but it requires the adoption of a local regulation, which we do not have here.
Well, you're already doing one regulation, this could be another way of doing it, I kind of like Mr. Philip's idea because. I I think it's, I mean, I don't know if you guys have talked about it, or if Mr. Philip, you want to retire from running Brunswick, we have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a stressful job running Brunswick, it's much more laid back with us. Really, it is.
Late nights, I'm not good with late nights, but.
Oh, it's not so late, we'll be done soon, it's only eight thirty.
Well, why don't we look at that, I mean, I I think.
Look at that. If even if not. If Mr. Hagney has a has a significant background in zoning theory and land use theory and case law and all of that, and if he can find a way. To sell its conceptual cleanness. I'm good, but I have to be fair to Greenwich High School and to G A. Sacred Heart's cool, I don't think they got any problem at all because they got lots of space, but. Well, you have to be fair to every school and every zone, and you've got to know that you're going to treat them all the same, so there you go, and that's one thing, but. It's the spot zoning, it's the. Plan of conservation and development, it's the comprehensive land use plan for the town, all that stuff, it's got to work, and Mr. Hagney can can put something together. Where we can debate that, but let's debate that first, let's figure out an answer to the text amendment or the regulation first, and then.
Totally makes sense.
Okay.
So, just to.
And he's probably, it's good he can't fire you, Mr. Philip.
That you you mentioned an overlay zone, and overlay zones are a helpful tool. To be able to provide for different uses and different sizes. And that may be something that would be available to other schools.
Right.
And of course, as an overlay zone, the commission has much more discretion than it would as part of a special permit.
But let me just remind you of something. Historic, so when Patrick and I had this conversation, I didn't say this to him. Do you remember what happened when we tried to rezone Greenwich High School? I will refresh your memory. We tried to rezone Greenwich High School because they needed more F A R, and they are a split zone, and if we had gone to the next zone. Down, they would have had lots more F A R, we thought that was kind of a cool answer because now Greenwich High School can build what they need, and. We were pleased with ourselves and we had the meeting and we got smashed into the ground.
That that did not go over well.
No, so.
Redid the stadium, and we needed square footage for the stadium, I went to the Board of Appeals and got a variance.
For hardship, because it's the only high school in town. That was his hardship, okay, so you guys know this.
But yes.
Okay, so now that's the, so now there's another school in town that's about to put an equipment shed in, and they're out of F A R. And we're going through hurdles trying to figure out how to fix it for them.
And the high. That was just a volume issue, they have plenty, they have F A R.
I hadn't, okay, so I hadn't seen the app, I just knew it was an issue, okay, so. If that our fear with the overlay zones, and because, you know, we just did the village district overlay, love that, we have the historic district overlay, okay. All those things, our fear with the overlay, we might not be able to pull it off. But what if you could merge the properties and we could do a T D R, you'd have to run, uh, transfer development rights. You'd have to write it very narrowly, Mr. Hagney. What we would not want to see. Is the T D R that allows you to build housing somewhere else, you know, that whole ugly T D R thing? Okay. Because, you know, we. We believe in inclusion. And there's a transfer development rights piece that has a. A segregating impact that we would not want to see happen. So, but that's an option, it's a great idea if you could merge the properties or if you could come up with a. But I think we have to consider the whole town and what the educational needs are, I would have, I would have been interested in an overlay and just not sure that. It would be well received.
So what Mr. Philip indicated earlier is, there's plenty of F A R. On the west side. And this facility and area, so this facility could be built on the west side, but then again, it would not be available to other schools. And youth groups in town, so that that's why we're proposing. That it does have a greater use.
We just want your rink, Mr. Philip. We just want your rink. We just want the skating rink. Okay, so just kidding, not totally, so, yeah, I I think you've got to do what's. Now, the commission, what is your view on this trade-off between community benefit? And zoning that opens a Pandora's box? Well, that was a really good.
I don't think transfer development rights is a way to go, I think actually it gets it gets on, as you would say, a slippery slope.
You would rather, well, you can word the T D R so it's very narrow.
Yeah, but I think actually we need to make sure that as protection of our community character. That T D R thing actually now opens to me a real can of worms. We have zoning, we have zoning for a reason, specifically for the back country.
Oh, no, no, you would write it very narrowly. Oh, no, no, you wouldn't write it very narrowly, the TDR.
Narrow, narrow gets, gets weird, cause it's, it, it gets too focused on one specific. I'm writing this for a project kind of thing. If you're gonna do zoning, you gotta take in account for the whole town.
Narrow is spot zoning, right?
No, no, the narrow, it's all we're trying to do is figure out how, how to, how to have the total FAR. The total land value of two properties that are separated by a street count together. And I'm thinking of an example that Mr. Hagney represented recently where that might not have been comfortable either. But I, I don't know. I mean, it's worth whatever you can think of to solve it, but I think we have to consider the whole town.
Well, my thought is maybe Mr. Hagney could come up with some language, you know, notwithstanding what Nick said, but I think it's worth thinking about.
Do, do, do we have?
But don't make Nick mad, Mr. Hagney.
I don't want to either.
It is never my intention.
No, don't make him happy. But do we, do we have any examples in other towns, Mr. Hagney? Other communities that have dealt with this problem, cause we're not that unique.
I've seen it in Connecticut. I know some towns have it. I'm gonna tell you that either Norwalk or Stanford has it. The Patrick Tracy, do you guys remember who has it?
I mean, I, I'm familiar with public school exceptions or, or, or whatever, uh, different zones for those. I, I'd have to look and see about the not-for-profit, you know, uh, look at schools with other, um, significant. Uh, education, uh, facilities, you know, whether they're college or, you know, private schools or whatever. But yeah, i- it, it's out there and, and the TRD, the, the, the development right change, that's more recent. So I don't know if we have a lot of, um. Good case law, so to speak, or press, uh, current practice.
Well, Madam Chair, wasn't the, uh, the source of the resistance to that attempt to rezone around the high school. Emanating from the neighbors who were in that other zone, correct? Or not?
It was, I think the main concern, uh, Mr. Lo was.
Oh, we've got a new Madam Chair. Okay, good.
I thought I jumped in. Thank you for that. Keep, okay, cause.
I have no intent of going back and joining you on the commission. Uh, that, that was a long time ago and I think, I think I did my time. The, the, the concern there was it was gonna leave plenty more floor area on the table. And more could be built. Turn was what else is gonna be built there? So that's why when, when, uh, we first started this discussion about the point one and whether that was too big. Uh, my thought was it doesn't need to be a point one. I picked point one because it's a, it's a, it's a clear number. But it could be a, a point oh nine rather than a point one.
Yeah, but Mr. Hagney, we have to worry about, to your point, what, what else in this town might be proposed to be built? The same argument. I mean, there's an analogous, uh, argument to be made here, right?
Yeah, so you're looking at three schools other than Brunswick that have campuses in the four acre zone. And that's Sacred Heart, which is immediately to the south.
Since you, since you impersonated me.
It's Whitby.
No, no, no. Since you impersonated me, I'm interrupting you and you're gonna have to do it over a parking puppy. Okay, I'm sorry. He's right at my feet. It isn't just the four acre. That's what I figured out last night. It's every, everyone in town is gonna say the same thing to us. Not just the four acre. Everybody's gonna come in. GA is gonna be in two minutes later. I gotta stop, cause I'm going deaf.
But actually, the, the, the regulation as it exists now is only for the two and four acre zones.
Right.
Greenwich Country Day?
Country Day is not in, in the two.
It's not?
Portion of it is. I think it may, yeah. The, 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 uh, the portion that is on Sandwich Road.
Well, I think what was telling me is your point.
Point is, I'm sorry, cause I had to, I had to mute myself. But the, the point isn't whether it's the RA four, it is. One is gonna come in and say, well, why can't I have more FAR, just like Brunswick got, wherever they are. That's the point. I mean, Mr. Philip understood why I was concerned, because we have to be fair to everybody. And then someone's gonna come in and say, well, I should get to exceed the FAR as well.
But I guess my point is that the, not to, I mean, obviously selfishly.
Don't switch sides.
You, you wouldn't, isn't the distinction for Brunswick that we've got the FAR across the street?
Where you, that's where we wanna go. Yeah, and we're, that's where we wanna go. And if you did a TDR. So what you can do is transfer the development right of the extra land. To the mainland, if you could combine the lots and you would just have to write it very narrowly, that two lots. The total area of two lots can only be combined if they are adjacent, except for a street. Or something like that. I'm not a good regulation writer, but it would be something like that. And I, I mean, I want, I, I think it's great to have a practice facility, but it's just gotta work where. We're not encountering other people saying why.
Totally get it, totally get it.
Okay.
You know, another thought I had was i- if, if the commission wanted to consider an overlay zone. To have it for athletic facilities. Because the, the argument again is athletic facilities take up a lot more space than, for example, a classroom. And that would result in the need for more floor area, uh, under the regulations. So that.
I would say educational is a better angle, is my take. Arn is nodding. Athletic facilities sound like it could be a bowling alley. Or whatever, um, educational means.
Well, you don't think bowling is an athletic activity?
I mean, I, I feel like the town is supportive of school needs mostly. Patrick, you wanna add something?
Um, well, I, I, I don't know if we got to the discussion, but is there no way to make this facility? Or the use that you, you're looking here fit under the current zoning? It's the other question.
That's really, and what they said is they can go across the street and then the town just wouldn't have access to it and.
Well, I'm, I met on this lot. I mean, I, I know we mentioned it yesterday. The auditorium was a, as.
Point seven five. And that's the max in seven, in, in the reg right now.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, but I, you know, then I'm just reminding, you know, Mr. Phillips and, and Tom, that the, the netatorium was an exercise in minimizing floor area. And, you know, reducing that, that gross floor number. So, you know, could that be done here artfully? Does it need to be a full-length field? I mean, is, I, I, I know we, we're not getting into the site plan yet, you know, here with the pre-app. But again, what, what is the need that was being filled here? Why is it a full-length field? Why can't it be, you know, a sixty yard, a half yard, you know, half field, you know, those type of things? Are, are we, are we, um, are we looking too bit broad when we can, you know, just solve the issue that, that's really at hand? With something a little less, um, square footage?
Yeah, a- actually, one of our first thoughts was how do we bury this so that the square footage does not count?
Right.
Uh, and, uh.
We went over the. Flat lot.
With, yeah, with Dave Gint, and how we address it under the current regulations. And it, it just was not feasible. So, um, but that, that was one of the thoughts we did have. How, how do you eliminate square footage? Or, or how do we eliminate existing square footage by raising grades? Uh, so that the square footage that's there now doesn't count. We are able to transfer it to another building. That, that's also something that, uh, it has a potential.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just add again, for the, for the next discussion on this is, is the need discussion. Because, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of many high schools that have a full field indoors. And, and that's, um, you know, even, even their, their college programs that, you know, they're, they're less, you know, there's no end zones. For example, you know, that type of thing, because they're, they're, they're working on things in, in abstract and not on a full field or whatever. So again, anything that can support the discussion. But, um, you know, if it's being looked at, if it hasn't been looked at, I should say, I think it, it's probably worthwhile.
You, you but, might be forgetting that this is all about an arms race, if you will. I mean, the schools need to stay competitive.
We got it.
So.
But that's exactly why we have to do something that works for all the schools and we can't be.
I understand. And guess what? Mr. Philip understands. He gets it in spades. He knows. Yeah, we're, we're, we got, we got some work today. We'll work on this. That's totally fair.
Um, totally fair. Uh, come back whenever you want. If you wanna have more discussion, if you've got some ideas of what you wanna talk about. All, we can ask the region if they've come across anything on TDR, but most of it is for housing.
Sit down and see what we can come up with that, uh, will work for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you for making the time to join us.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, um, so we, we did a goof because we didn't.
So we, we could let Kelly go, right?
Yes. Oh, Kelly, so endeth the public meeting. And it was a pleasure, even though we didn't get to talk to you. Yes, hold on. An arms race for, yes, yes. Okay, um, okay. So Kelly, you have your hand up. I'm waiting. Good night. Good night. That's what I was waiting for. All right, um, so we're gonna let her go. I'm so sorry we didn't get to see her. Okay, um, there was a goof where I thought that the briefing session already had the election on its agenda. And it didn't, it was on tonight and not yesterday. So we need to have elections again, cause it wasn't totally kosher and legit. Could I please have a motion?
From the proud area of Byram, I nominate the distinguished Mr. McRae.
Do I have a second?
Second.
For, wait a minute, secretary.
Secretary.
Second.
Mr. Wells is second. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
I.
Wait, no discussion?
No, no discussion. We did this yesterday. Mr. Lo.
I, I've been thinking since yesterday, though.
Ms. Yaski.
Hi.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
And Albin is also aye and with that the motion passes six, zero, one.
Go for it, Arn.
I nominate.
What, Patrick, wait, what?
Uh, no, after, after this, I have, I have to say something, sorry.
Okay. If you were gonna tell me we didn't do it kosher.
No, no, you're, you're doing fine if you need to.
Wait, you did put it on this agenda, right?
They did.
Who, who moved the nomination of Nick this time?
Um, Peter Lo.
And who was second then?
Me.
Arn Wells. Got it, yeah. Got it. I had him backwards. Okay, cool.
Yeah, so where is it on the agenda?
Reposted. We amended it on Monday morning, so that's why.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I thought it was the briefing that got amended and it was the regular one and I didn't look. Okay.
Okay, now we can rethink the whole chair thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rethink. Get someone who does not have a collie that barks incessantly. Madam Tracy.
Term of one year, I'm assuming?
It's always one year per the charter, yeah.
Okay, and do you want the term to start now or do you?
Yeah.
You guys are all technically in until July ninth, so just ask.
I'm trying to move it back in time.
Okay.
We were originally supposed to be early in the year. And it was, someone was in Israel and then someone was away and we, we just got too far into the year. We should keep it closer to the original in February.
We'll adjust it. Got it. Cause I keep track of it when I, on a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Cool.
All right, so if you got someone who didn't have barking collies all through the meeting, it would be good.
Nobody heard them.
All right, could I have a motion?
It would be, can I, can I make the motion or are we just gonna keep chatting?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Wells.
It would be my great honor to nominate Madam Margarita Albin. To the illustrious position of Chair of the Town of Greenwich's Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
For a term of one year.
Oh, sorry, second.
Wells has now, has made the motion.
Oh, he, he qualified. It's only one year, just so you know. You're on probation.
All right, and Lo has seconded. How do you vote, Mr. Wells?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mr. Lo?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Yaski.
Aye.
And Albin abstains.
What about Nick?
Aye.
Aye. Didn't I call on you?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
Aye, 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 aye.
Put Nick's on, yeah, longer than a year. No.
All right, now.
Safety knee, done? We done?
No, no, we gotta do the motions. But so the first motion is I hereby move approval of the November twenty-sixth. By the way, there's a typo in the agenda. It's the twenty-sixth. And the February twenty-five minutes, that's twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Everybody was here so we can do a voice.
Sorry, the typo, I didn't, I didn't hear that, Madam Chair.
It says twen- November twenty-five on the agenda and it's actually the twenty-sixth.
You mean it's not from the future?
No, twenty twenty-four.
Just a day ahead.
Both are twenty twenty-four. It's a day wrong, not the year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I hereby make a motion that we approve both of those. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lo has seconded. Could I have a voice vote?
Aye.
All right, we got two quickies. If our secretary is ready, otherwise we'll go home.
One twenty Perkins Road, application PLPZ twenty twenty-five zero two three, final site plan, special permit applicant. Is requesting approval to reconstruct the pool building, paddle tennis building, two pavilions, a poolside deck. And with associated drainage and landscaping improvements resulting in a combined building, building volume of in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. On a hundred and fifty plus acre property in the RA two zone. Uh, at AEN X flood zones. As required, uh, whereas, as required, the property came before the commission as a pre-application at the six eleven twenty-four public hearing. Commission finds that the parking, uh, should represent a two hundred and thirteen standard space. Plus nine accessible spaces. Conservation issue comments dated three fourteen twenty-five indicating recommendations to the application. Zoning issue comments on three twenty twenty-five indicating proposal must meet the lighting regulations. AR sheet issued minutes dated, uh, four twenty-three twenty-five and indicating electronic return. Uh, EMAC issue comments dated three eight twenty-five indicating a disappointing review. Health department indicated comments dated three fourteen twenty-five indicating comments to the proposal. DPW drainage issue comment stated out three eleven twenty-five indicating approval for zoning building permit. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire, uh, permits, excuse me, number twenty twenty-four one oh six. On one nineteen twenty-five. Therefore, motion to approve with the following comments, the applicant shall provide a as-built parking plan. Uh, with all standard spaces and accessible spaces counted. There shall be no change in the membership. And for health department comments, the state of Connecticut Department of Health will need to approve the proposed splash pad prior to submission for billing permits. For conservation comments, the applicant shall use as many native plants, materials as possible. And provide a rubber-type play surface. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall electronically return to ARC for final approval. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide a comprehensive soil erosion control plan. Um, which shall be installed and inspected by planning and zoning staff. All S E N C should be in accordance with the Connecticut Deep March thirty twenty twenty-four guidelines. And all previous planning and zoning commission approvals and conditions that we continued. And the applicant shall address any and all outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells is seconded. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lo.
Aye.
Mr. McRae.
Aye.
Mr. Yaski.
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that the motion passes five, nothing, and we go to a hundred, Clabbard.
One hundred, Corporate Ridge Road, application PLPZ twenty twenty-five zero five six, final site plan, special permit. Advocate is requesting approval to remove an existing detached garage. Construction in addition, and a new three-car garage, proposed pool, poolhouse and patio, realignment of the driveway with drainage and landscaping improvements. Uh, the total proposed volume would exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet on a five point two four acre property located in the RA two zone. Whereas the required property became before the commission as a pre-application at the six eleven twenty-four public hearing. Uh, the commission finds that conservation comments stated five two twenty-five indicating recommendations to the application. Zoning issue comments for three twenty-five indicating approvals must comply with section six one oh one of the B BZR. Uh, air, whoops, uh, nope, not this one. EMAC issue comments on, uh, four twenty-eight indicating a favorable review. Health issue comments, uh, dated three twenty twenty-five indicating approval of a B one hundred plan. DPW drainage, the issue comments, uh, dated four two twenty-five indicating approval for zoning permit.
DPW drainage, the issue comments, uh, dated four two twenty five indicating approval for zoning permit. Uh, wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated two twenty one twenty five indicating no permit required. Therefore, motion to approve with the following comments. Pool structure shall contain only a wet bar as defined, defined by section six five dash A, six five A. Five to fifty two point five of the B Z R. Uh, per conservation comments, the applicant shall use as many native plants, uh, materials as possible. And the applicant is to address any and all outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low.
Aye.
Mr. McRae.
Aye.
Mr. Yaski.
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that the motion passes five, nothing, Patrick.
Uh, I have one small question to ask the commission. Uh, I've met with, uh. The Bruce Museum and other related departments today regarding possibly, uh, moving that path and, and what the logistics of that would be. It was a good conversation, but the comment came up about what agencies should be, uh, tapped to, um, provide input. And, um, the wall, uh, just so you're aware, is original to the Bruce Museum, the Bruce household. Uh, and I believe the prior tenant.
Eighteen fifty nine is the date we were.
So, um, my recommendation obviously was go to, um, you know, instead of us asking HGC, let them go to HGC themselves to get their opinion. Um, sooner than later, um, the, uh. Work going on the hill is largely going to be either relocation of trees or replanting of trees that may be lost. Um, it with the wall shift, um, because it is a town property and we are using the tree warden as required. I, I don't think that the, um, A R C necessarily is going to need to be tabbed on that. And I just want to make sure that I'm giving them good advice and because, um. It seems like, uh, we're, we're double jeopardying it here. If we go HGC and the Parks and Rec Committee. And, uh, the tree warden and then also A R C. That's a lot of advisory comments in a.
I'm one pathway.
For, right. And then I, again, any work that has to get done there, even if A R C wants it to happen, it would have to be at the permission of the tree warden. So I'm wondering if the tree warden's, uh, uh, opinion is, is enough for this discussion. Um.
All of them. It'd be great just to watch.
All right. So what's the question?
Do, do they need to go to A R C? Sorry. That's, you're right. That was.
Yeah, I don't think they need to go to A R C, but I think they should go to H D C. And our practice has always been if they go to one, they don't go to the other.
Okay, good. All right.
Why are they going to H D C again?
Because the wall that they're going to take down.
Yeah.
Is eighteen fifty nine and H D C was very concerned. About the loss of this original historic stone wall.
Yeah.
And, uh, wanted to have input and they've been writing. To say, why were they not consulted and that, you know, this is a piece of town heritage.
Well, and, and we don't in fact have to lose the wall, do we? I mean, we have.
Oh, it's being lost. If you remember the plan.
No, no, but we have other options.
The wall gets rebuilt completely.
Well. That's not written in stone, as they say. So.
Oh, that's very.
You know. Yes, so. Let's jump off that bridge when we come to it, as our former director might say.
He said, yeah.
That was Katie's best expression. So, yes, send them to H D C because H D C really wants to have input. What do you do with parks and rank after H D C has opined? We'll know, right?
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, they, they, we would like them to be as the authority over the department there. I think they would like to be involved. So it's, it's fine. Um, I think it's good. And, and the discussion today, just so everyone who's listening understands. It seems to me now that the wall would just be relocated. It's not a, it's not a just desecration and then redesign. It's, it's definitely, uh, more thoughtful than that. But again, uh, I think, I think the commission would appreciate all their input. So we're, we're going to ask for it.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Okay. That's it. To, to make this longer.
Okay, no, that's okay. So we'll see everybody on Monday.